Visit complete.
That's pretty awesome.
I think we should buy a new one. Call the order that council work session Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. It's 3pm. We begin with Altavera Day update. Who's going first?
No, I really want to turn it over to Kimball and we intended this as an opportunity for you all after you've been out to the side if you have any specific questions. And then I think Kimball has just a couple of things she'll cover in terms of moving forward. So we could start with your questions first or we could start with Kimball first. What's your preference?
Few words and then we'll ask you some questions.
Sure. So hello, I'm Kimball Kringle with Gorman and Company. It's always a pleasure to be here in the town of Breck. Thanks for having me come over today. It was really great to showcase the Alta Verde. Phase one site and the phase two site. It's moving right along. As you can see, we're into framing all four of the workforce buildings and we are on time right now. And our contractual delivery date is in August of 2024. We're a little bit ahead of that right now, yet what we know in construction is lots of goblins pop up out of nowhere to gobble up your schedule. So you know, we're still excited to be on track with with timing, but if if that does start to stick and we feel like we're going to deliver ahead of schedule, we'll adjust our plans for that accordingly. But if you'll remember with Alta Verde workforce, we broke ground in August of 2022. We rested that site through the winter because it's just a big site and we couldn't get to all the site work and the foundations. Prior to the snow falling, that actually ends up saving us a lot of energy and money to rest a site over the winter when we're at that stage. And we can come out in the spring, site is ready to go. We pour our concrete pads and we start framing. So here it is. It's already unfortunately late July, but having all four buildings already framed up and
It's pretty cool.
In framing is is pretty cool. We're very excited about it. So that's Alta Verde workforce. I was going to review a little bit about Alta Verde. Our first phase and how that has been operating to date. If you'll remember, we opened the doors to that over the holidays in 2022 and 2023. We were fully leased up by April of 2023. I think a lot of folks got to see behind the curtain on how lease up goes and see some of the pain points of what happens when you have a very limited amount of supply of something in high demand that you can offer. We saw a lot of interest in the apartment homes. And we saw some folks that were unfortunately pretty upset when they were either over income or when the units were spoken for. We always follow an open and a transparent process so that it is fair to everybody. We're very strict about that. For all the right reasons. And as some of the staff around the room know, we we did add some really important course corrections along the way to make sure that we were reaching out to our community partners. Thoroughly. And that was a great course correction that we did. We hosted a meeting with some of the nonprofits in town and to make sure that we were appropriately reaching some of our folks that may have barriers to applying in a more typical way. And so that was excellent and did yield some really positive results. And even furthermore, what's been great is just having that relationship with the nonprofits in town that will continue to provide services to our now residents that live at Alta Verde. So a couple of just data points for you. We reviewed 400, just over 400 full applications for Alta Verde Lytec. And again, we had 80 apartment homes to offer. 64 were below 60% of area median income. 16 went up to 100% of area median income. I do have an AMI chart if anybody would like to see that for 2022, which is the data points that we opened under. If anybody has a question for that, just let me know. We do have a waiting list that we're maintaining at the property, which is comprised of over 300 names at this point in time, and that grows all the time. We're keeping that very robust, knowing that Alta Verde workforce is coming. And so, you know, we don't have many vacant units that have popped up to date. Obviously, it's not been that long. We don't expect high turnover either. And so when a unit does become vacant, we use that waiting list as the order in which we reach out to people to see if they're still interested and still qualified to apply to live at Alta Verde Lytec. In terms of demographics, we have just about just over 40 kiddos that are living at Alta Verde Lytec. We have just under 60 that are between the ages of 18 and 30. And same, just under 60 that are 30 plus in age. It's always a trick trying to figure out where to break those age ranges up, but that's what I picked. So. And then you know, the favorite things that we've heard about folks that are living at the property. They're the the first thing people talk about is that they're living in a new home that's got kind of the bells and whistles, right? It feels new. It's spacious. It's just the apartments live really well. People love the proximity to the bus line. Even folks that have cars, the bus is a primary source of transportation and it's very convenient. There were a lot of folks that had been couch surfing that before they moved into Alta Verde Lytec. And so, you know, having their own place is always something people report as having, you know, that's one of their favorite things. And, you know, again, not having to live with roommates. So that's just a quick recap on Alta Verde Lytec, a little summary of our schedule yet to come with Alta Verde workforce. And I'm happy to answer any questions or talk about anything.
I have a question about that. I know we I know we talked briefly about the waitlist for Alta Verde Lytec and how it was separate from Alta Verde workforce. And I'm just curious, I really feel for those people who've been now on a waitlist for a year plus and that it's just going to be a completely start over. Is there a reason? I mean, I'm sure there are lots of reasons, but can we, is there a way to maybe consider just having that be one? And of course, they may not be able to afford that unit, but some people would be able to.
Yeah, that's a great question. Absolutely something we can look at because that's something.
I would jump in on that, Kelly. I don't know if I would support that direction. I think we had a lot of learning experiences, as you said, through Alta Verde one course corrections we had to make where I think we can be a little better with our initial outreach where it's at the exact same time, the folks on the waitlist, our partner organizations, town, we're all putting the word out at the same time.
Okay, that makes sense.
So AMI, 100% AMI for one person is 77,000 bucks in Summit County?
So that is the 2023 AMI for a one-person household is $77,000.
Yeah. Wow. Is that, didn't that reflects reality?
Well, it's a little difficult to say because this is area median income. So it's the medium, right? It's not the average. It's the middle. And in high country, you know, the the high country communities, the mountain towns, the rural resort towns of Colorado. We've seen an influx of folks that are raising the the incomes of communities, either through remote work or other factors. And that
Yeah.
shifts things around. We did see this last year where the average income increased for all households by 30%. And HUD published tables that capped that increase to just under 6%. And so HUD said, something doesn't seem right here. We're capping it.
The trick I'm sorry, but like a, I think a school teacher makes 57,000 a year beginning, often probably makes around that. God, it's pretty sad that we we have, we have, you know, these crucial people working at 60% AMI, but that that's not your, it's not your circus, not your monkey. So I understand.
It is a little bit of our circus, right? Because and I think that that is why the town and the vision of the town to save a mixed income community to provide housing between 30% AMI all the way up to 120% AMI. There are people all across that income spectrum. And we always say people need housing that is affordable to them, to their situation, to their household composition. If you're married, if you're two income earners, if you're one income earner with dependents, whatever that may be, it varies household by household. And so having that spectrum is really important. We're in the midst of that delivery. And if we were to look backwards in four years from now and we see, you know, the impact of having that broad spectrum of affordability, I think it's going to be quite amazing to see the blend and the mix that gets to live at that awesome spot.
Yeah, like 50% of the units are going to be at the 80% AMI for Alta Verde.
Yeah, I really applaud. I applaud what you guys are doing, especially, you know, for the lower AMIs. I'm just, I'm just, I was just surprised when I saw this, this graph that
Crazy.
That that's what they consider 100% of AMI.
Jeffrey, to remind you, that's also, we've had, and Eric's had communications with Congressman the Goose's office. And, you know, at the federal level, they're trying to address this. Where that it's that they take into consideration resort areas that have, you know, is not the same as the Denver area when it comes to it. Now, I don't know what headway is being made on that at the federal level yet, but I think they, we've seen a draft of this. Have you seen?
To do a localized.
Does it do anything that's going to help us?
Think we all want to see something adjust a little bit. Because local W2 earners are in a very different situation than imported W2s, for lack of a better word of. But I think by saying that these are local units, you know, you have to be locally working. We're really trying to help define who we're targeting.
Another way around it, essentially. Yeah, good.
But it's it's complicated though, right? Because if we lower AMIs, then products with income caps get harder and harder. However, rents, I'm assuming are calculated based on AMI. So I mean, it's they kind of go together.
It is complicated. And one thing I pointed out, you know, had the 2023 income tables been published before we leased up Alta Verde Lytec, we would have captured a bunch more people because, you know, you just see the incomes.
Would have been higher too, right?
I mean, it's all based on 30% of your income. So it's it's a slight higher, but for a lot of folks that were just over that threshold, I mean, that's when it just hurts.
Yeah, I bet. And yeah, that's tricky. I'm assuming on household size, dependents don't count.
Dependents do count. Yep. So if you have, if you're a three-person household.
So you're a single parent with three kids, you have to hit the four person. You have to pay rent based on the four-person AMI.
No, because the rent is, the rent is the same if it's an 80% AMI unit, for example. It just means your income can be slightly different. What that accounts for is you're paying higher expenses every month for food. All the things that kids take from you.
The income side, it's not calculating back to the rent side. The rent side's based on one person.
Yeah. Oh, the rent is just based on.
Center of income, it's based on one person.
It's based on the size of the unit.
It's based on the size of the unit. Yeah.
Add one, one, one household.
So you can see like the 2023 rents, like an 80% three-bedroom is $2,300.
Right.
If you have four people in your household, you can make more income than if you have two people in your household at that 80%. And that's just to try to right-size the expense side of the equation.
Where I'm coming to is there are a lot of our workforce that don't have one person per bedroom.
That's right.
So they'll have family of a single parent and three kids and a two-bedroom or one-bedroom.
We see all sorts of different compositions of families and individuals all the way through.
Okay, thanks.
Kimball, after going through Alta Verde one, do you have an updated process or outreach plan for Alta Verde two?
Oh, we sure do. That's a great question. Yeah. We're essentially, and I think folks know me well enough to know now, we we won't start the process too early because then that gets complicated in different ways. But we will start the process first and foremost with a similar community meeting like we had midstream on Alta Verde Lytec. We will have more in-person opportunities for folks to understand the process. The application process will not be nearly as difficult on the workforce units because different funding mechanisms have different requirements. But we really want to get better at our outreach plan and removing barriers to application and therefore residency at Alta Verde.
Yeah, we appreciate you pivoting so much on Alta Verde one. As we all know, it's incredibly emotional because it's such a limited supply of housing. So anything we can do, Lori, you were great setting up those meetings with our partners, Kimball, you too. So that's something we can do ahead of the application.
Absolutely.
Process, opening and vetting all those, those questions, concerns.
And just a walkthrough of here's what the process is because it will be different. And it's really important for folks to understand what that game plan, you know, looks like and to understand how they move through the process. The beauty of what we did is we've maintained those relationships as we've gone through. And so and, you know, those relationships aren't only in Breckenridge. So we have lots of other properties in Summit County, either in existence or under construction that we're able to kind of expand that to as well. So it was, it, we did learn lessons and we definitely did pivot and it definitely made things better in the end.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have one more. A request question. I have a request question.
Requested.
Yeah. I'm hoping that we can be partners in the imagining of how the river is going to interact with that site. Because I just think we're paying more and more attention to, you know, what are great experiences for people who live here and people who are visiting to get to the river? And we, you know, that going out there today, it was very obvious that it's still that like bank and then five feet down and then the river. And so I think there's still time here at this point in the process to really make something better than that.
We would love that. I'm not sure if folks remember, but our early design concepts did have some interaction with the river and we pulled that back. At the time, I think that was the desire because it's, it's really hard to, like seeing what we saw today. It was almost impossible to imagine that at the time. And I think if we're not careful about the interaction, it will occur naturally, which has its own consequences. So I think that's absolutely something we'd be interested in doing. We won't be planting anything until next, you know, spring. So there's plenty of time.
Is there an opportunity to work with open space? On what that could look like or? What do you, do you have a vision or what do you think?
We can even pull up some of our old, yeah, absolutely. I actually called Elena on the way here and said, can you send me all the plans that we did initially? Because we have a bunch and we would love that. In part because we know if you don't build, you know, avenues to get to a destination that people want to see, they will make it. And we'd rather have something that's a little bit more controlled, that reduces erosion. And now that you can see how close it is, I think it's just such an incredible spot.
Yeah, it's close, but there is still space to, you know, lay in something that's accessible. And we know if there's 40 kids just in those buildings that are already there, we're going to have a lot more kids and dogs. And it just seems like such a resource that we would be overlooking.
It's just, as you said, you know, going by the site that may need a place to break and it's gorgeous right there.
Did you say we had 40 kids in Alta Verde one?
Yeah, we actually have more than that. Yeah, we, you know.
Captured a lot of families.
Very romantic.
Quick jump back to the river. To me, it's, it's appropriate to tie it into what Shannon's doing with Norris already with the river site planning. And it's just, that was that broader discussion I wanted to have a while ago. It's be good to target it in that zone.
Norris would be delighted.
I bet they would. Yeah. I think Seth wants like jumps and stuff for the kids. Oh, yeah.
So one of our iterations was a bike pump track because some of us like to bike and I think that got axed pretty early. So. An Evel Knievel jumper out of the river.
Other questions?
All right.
Thanks. It's great to see you and we'll be back as we get closer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pump track, maybe BB gun wars.
Good thing we got the Breck film here early.
Gary? Are you the guy?
We'll just wait for you.
Be the player.
You gonna sit down here?
He forgot. He's been gone a while.
I don't think there were microphones invented when he was here. Yeah.
Forgive the informality, but you get a milk every minute out of a Breck.
They're tan at least.
And these are no longer optional.
Oh, yeah. Tell me about it.
Ready to go? Again, thanks for the time today. We were last here for an update in January. So we'll try to do these every six months or so, and we have more information to report and what have you. This is an update only on the eclipse. We are not going to be covering the film festivals today, but just a quick couple of comments on the film festival. We're having a great submission season. Over 500 movies have been submitted for review. We don't show 500 movies, but you know, we're around 100 every year when you take in the student movies and all that other stuff. So a great season for that. And the festival is less than two, two months off. It's September 21st through the 24th. So please mark your calendars. I'm going to cover, as I said, eclipse issues in two ways. Talk about programming and operational issues. And then move on to financial issues, if that's okay with everybody. And I'm going to respect Rick's threat to twist my head off if I go past 20 minutes. So I'll be, I'll be lying here.
It's a serious threat.
We have a clock.
You have a what? Oh, a clock? Yeah, let it run. First off, under pro programming and operations, the the issue of not knowing the theater is here and gee, we never knew you existed. And we talked about this a little bit the last time. That seems to have diminished. We are, we've increased advertising. We've, thanks to Eric, we've got that kiosk downstairs at Eric's where things are getting a lot better than that regard. So that one seems to be fading, as I said. National trends. The audiences have not returned to movie theaters fully yet. The the number right now is about 80% of the audiences pre-COVID, that'd be 2019 versus the number of people getting to theaters now is only about 80%. It'll be interesting to see after this really big blockbuster season, how those numbers change. I suspect they'll go up a little bit myself, but well, they're certainly not going to get back to 100%. And that's probably happening here with the eclipse. You may recall, we had no information really about what the number of audience, you know, how many people attended, what the revenues were. Karen had her own way of keeping her books and we weren't able to get and see any of that. And I'm not complaining, but I just, but I think it's safe to say that we're probably affected somewhat similarly as the national numbers are going. So just throw that in there. We have picked up recently. You know, we had Indiana Jones. It was very successful. Mission Impossible is there right now. The Barbie is coming, I think Friday.
Yes.
You know, the former mayor would have probably got his tutu out and joined us for the Barbie party, but I have no hope for the current mayor, but that's another.
No, the tutu.
The
I'm waiting for Oppenheimer. One more head of fourth.
Be coming next. So we're excited because we've had a very, the numbers you're going to see in a few minutes, by the way. Oh, God. I have some financial numbers to show you and believe me, I'll show them to you in a few minutes. But we're excited about, the numbers you're going to see are just through June, but July has been pretty strong. And we think August is going to be similarly as strong with Barbie and Oppenheimer most of that month. So that's, that's good news. So we might make up a little ground there. But now another interesting, speaking of national issues, the writers and actors strike. This could be a game changer for not just small theaters like ours, but for theaters all over the country. If the programming is not there and like this summer is the perfect example, we've had several great movies. And that's our bread and butter right now, the the big blockbusters. But if we don't have those next year or if there's very few of them, it's, it's, it changes the the equation quickly. We will continue as best we can to get the top, top movies. As I said, that's our bread and butter. We'll also continue to assert, insert art house showings, the other special screenings. And those have been successful, but not on a steady diet basis. The the blockbusters are still the, as I said, the bread and butter. An interesting note, we recently have developed a close relationship with a movie distributor and producer who has offered us a couple of his movies that are coming out later this year on a first C basis. So right now, August 8th, we have a movie of Ben Kingsley, real top-notch actor coming to the eclipse for a private or not a private screening, but a special screening that'll be a, you know, I guess the Colorado or maybe even national premiere of that movie.
That's cool.
Before the release date. And I know there's another one coming after, but I don't have that date yet unless somebody back there does.
Late August.
Late August. Perfect. Close enough. Other issues related to programming. So we've really are, you know, 95% of movie theater, which I think is what you guys wanted, but we do a lot of other things. And there's some reasons for that. We'll get into in a few minutes. Thank God she showed up. The we, we have yeah, if you don't mind passing, don't dwell these numbers yet. We'll get to those in just a minute. But we do personal rentals of the theater. We've done 15, 16, 17 of those so far. We charge for that. That's a new income for us and it's something that we have to continue to do.
Charges.
What is the current charge? 500 is where we started.
Yeah, 500 or so, but then we, we negotiate sometimes, especially with nonprofits that they're doing a fundraiser. What we'll do last week, keep the confession.
Gotcha.
For the Soul Center presentation, that was gratis. You know, those are the kinds of things that, you know, you gotta do as a community member. So that's perfect. Library, working with books to movie clubs. We have TEDx Breck. Starting this past week, we had our first TEDx Breck. I, I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was pretty well-attended. Sunday mornings, Father Dyer is using the church during the remodel and that remodel is going to go 18 to 24 months. So we have them in the eclipse, Sunday mornings. We continue to do the stand-up comedian nights. They've been really successful for us. They draw a lot of people. And we make money at this theater through our concessions and the concessions on those nights are great. So something that will be continued to do and we'll continue to work with any other groups, community groups, anybody else. We've had a few in the past. But we're open for those kinds of partnerships and we'll continue that. So it's busy and I believe the operations are going well. Programming is strong and we'll continue to do that. Financials, we now you can look at the handout. This is a very high level. Uh, this is a very high level, um. Can I have one too, Marty? Thank you. Very high level view of, uh, what's going on at the eclipse for, uh, Breck Film since it's opened. And as you can see, there's been losses, operational losses. That's operations only in the top part there, uh, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-four thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. And we're running in the red so far this year. As I said a little while ago, we're optimistic that might change a little bit with a couple of strong months coming up. But I gotta believe by the end of the year, we're still gonna have some sort of deficit. We'll, we'll see. Uh, startup costs, um, are there. Those are not non-recurring and those are one-time costs, but they were there. And I guess I wanted to show with this real simple, you know, analysis here that we, Breck Film is about ninety-five thousand dollars expenditures, either losses or other expenditures so far. The town came up with, uh, thank you very much for the thirty thousand dollar grant for the eclipse last fall or, well, we received it this year, but we made the presentations last fall. That is going to cut our net down to about sixty-five, but that's a real number in this one you need to keep in mind. What are we doing to generate more revenue? What are we doing to cut expenses so we don't continue to run in the red? The, um, as I said a moment ago, we're gonna continue to bring in other entertainment, uh, comedians and so on. The personal rentals, uh, will continue again, uh, at five hundred or maybe more. We'll see. The church is actually renting from us, uh, which is helping us, the, the, a nice income stream for us. And we're happy about it and happy to help them out. Uh, we are starting a major supporter of the theater campaign. Uh, this is a campaign push to try to raise the thirty thousand. We so far have had some initial success and hopefully that will continue so we can make this campaign a successful one. So we're out doing private fundraising, I guess you could say. Um, we have reduced staffing. Uh, we have actually cut one staff member. I mentioned this in January, but you probably don't remember it, but we cut one staff member because we had to. Uh, it was just financially impossible to keep going the way we were. That saves money for the eclipse as well as for Breck, uh, Film Festival on the other side of the, uh, other side of the equation. Staffing hours have also been reduced. That actually has been a benefit to some of the staff members who think they can do their jobs in fifty or seventy-five percent time. And it also saves us money. So we, we push that as well. Uh, timing of movies. This is an interesting one, but, uh, when you bring out, uh, well, Indiana Jones, you get at an opening night, you're paying, and right now we're paying sixty-five percent of our gate for, uh, Mission Impossible. So a ten dollar ticket, six fifty goes back to the studios and the distributors. Rec film keeps, uh, free fifty. But if you delay sometimes, uh, you can get a discount. So if you show a first one blockbuster, maybe a month after it's showing, that's probably a little too long to wait because by then you're gonna, your audience is shrunk. But if you do it maybe a couple of weeks later, you still have a good chance of getting good crowds and the price drops not below fifty percent, but maybe fifty-five or something. So you, you, we can save some money there and we've been trying that with some of the movies. Oppenheimer is coming after the opening date, but it's not likely, uh, they're gonna discount that one right away because it's, it's another big one so far. So we're trying that and we've trimmed the budget every, anywhere we can. Believe me, we've gone through it, uh, hard. So bottom line, the facility is busy. Uh, we're finding ways to, uh, raise income. I think we have right-sized the staff, believe me, and maybe we're a little slightly understaffed right now. And, uh, we're being, continue to bring the best movie releases to Breckenridge, uh, that we can. We will be submitting, uh, and, under your grant request, uh, a request for the film festival as we've done for many years. That is an important funding source for us. It's, uh, one that we much appreciate the council continuing to, uh, uh, to grant. And, uh, we'll be doing that one. We will also be submitting a grant to re, uh, to cover some of the eclipse expenses. Not all of those expenses I summarized earlier. We have a real skin in this game and we understand that we're gonna have some expenses that are gonna continue to just be ours and losses that we'll have to write off forever, but, but we need some additional help. Uh, we'd hoped that things would be even a lot more better this year. But we're gonna need to, uh, submit, uh, a request similar to last year to, to help out. Um, I wish this, uh, things were different, but, uh, that's the real reality that we're facing now. And then before we go to Q and A, uh, Cindy had a quick comment on your website.
Just ended a little bit, you know, positive note. I browse the internet a lot. I'm one of those addicted people that browses. And I went to Breckenridge and I clicked on.
I clicked on play, which is really big and bold on the top of your website. And I just wanna say thank you so much. We are, it's Breck Create and it's the Eclipse Theater. So when people go to our, to the town of Breckenridge site, um, and are looking for things to do with their kids or whatever, we're actually on there. And I just want to say I appreciate that. It looks great. The link works. It's all really nice. So thank you.
So notice I, I shifted from a real negative note to a little bit higher note before we started Q and A. So, uh, we're, all of us are right open for questions. Um, if you have some on the chart or any of the other things I, I rushed through.
Gary, I thought, um, I thought the town gave a fifty-five K grant for you guys.
Uh, it's, it was two parts.
Oh.
Yep. Uh, thirty thousand came to the eclipse and believe me, that was the Godsend. Thank you. But the other twenty-five was an annual grant that we and a lot of other the arts organizations put in. So you're right, the combined total was fifty-five.
Okay. Other questions?
Gary, nice posse you brought, by the way. Nice posse you brought back there. Um, how long is the lag if this strike continues? Uh, how long is the lag until we're gonna start missing films?
Labor Day is kind of the real point as far as settling that before things might, oh, I usually don't need a mic, but, um, Labor Day is kind of what they're talking about, settling before, um, things start getting delayed in the future. But, um, I know a film that was supposed to open at Venice, be the opening film, the tennis one. I can't remember the name of it. Because they can't have their stars there, they actually pulled out of the premiere of Venice, the whole headliner, and they moved it to April. And so things could start either getting delayed or hopefully they don't start pulling things in the fall and just move them to next year because they can't have the actors promoting them. So it's kind of an unknown, but I, I hear Labor Days, the, the day if they get it settled, everything should be okay.
Yeah, I will say the ticket, online ticket sales, uh, to, to do, you know, for a person to buy tickets, is a lot, is great now. It's so much easier than it, uh.
Yeah, that, that's improved a lot. Thanks for saying that. That's, and most people are buying them online.
Oh, really?
There's just very few that are buying at the, uh, at the counter.
Yeah, I, sometimes I buy in the counter because no one believes when they see me that I'm a senior. But, but, uh, I, you know, I.
Look at you, they know.
Don't.
Hey, hey, Gary, um, great, great effort, Cynthia, the team on, um, the website. I, and, and just the overall push around town. I definitely seen a lot more of a presence. It's great. Do you guys have access to the BCA, um, kiosks around town? The, no? That might be something.
I, I've been trying to work with them a little bit, but they, they have not included us, is all I can say. I'm not really sure why that is. But, um, I noticed actually they don't have anything in those kiosks except for Brett Create events, not, I thought that'd see backstage theater or NRO on there at least, but so far right now, unless they've changed it, but I just looked probably about a week and a half ago.
Yeah.
He's our eyes guy. Direction we wanna go on that.
Ask questions on that.
Yeah, well, I think we should. I mean.
The ticket sales too, because you're, you're at a different ticket platform, right?
We are, uh, we are. But there's been a lot of talk about mergers and ticket sales. Let me, I'm gonna let Cynthia answer this, but let me lead into it. We, um, we continue to have our eyes open and our minds open if, on how to work with the, uh, Brett Creative Arts. Whether it be some kind of merger in the future or something. Let's bring it on. Let's take a look at it. Let's analyze it. What are the benefits? What are the, what are the downfalls? So that's, that's happening. In terms of ticketing, and that's think.
Where you should segue in.
Let me, let me just, I don't know how much time we have left, but quick history. We went into COVID, right? And we had to cancel our festival. So we went to an online all virtual festival, which was actually very successful. When we did that, the Audience View platform, which is what Brett Create uses, uh, didn't have a virtual, they, they didn't have that capacity at the time. So we went to a, um, platform called Eventive, which is what pretty much all film festivals use for their ticketing. And so that's where we've been and that's where we've stayed. I did talk to, I believe she's a new ticketing manager at Brett Create and she and I had a really nice conversation. I kind of tried to explain to her some of the, you know, things that are unique about our system that we would need. And she was like, ooh, you know, how about if we meet at your festival? And I'll just observe what you guys are doing and then maybe we can talk after the festival and see what might work for us. So we, we are, we'd like to make an effort to do it, but I can tell you, I don't know of a film festival. I've searched, as I mentioned. I have not seen one film festival that uses this, um, particular platform for several different reasons I won't go into. Um, and yeah, that's my answer to that.
Okay.
I also thought it was great that you guys, um, put out to the schools, a big discount code. And now hearing how slim the margins are, it sounds like you didn't make anything off of that. But I thought it was an awesome way. A big group of Dylan Valley kids came over to see Spider-Man after school got out. So it's definitely interesting, you know, those, that, that's a pretty broad reach to get all the way over to Dylan where they have a movie theater. So.
We have a few, uh, staff people, people that work for us that live over there. So it really helps because they, they are.
Ticketing thing would have anything to do with those kiosks though.
No.
I mean, those kiosks are right in the center of town. There should be some.
And a lot of times they're empty.
A lot of time they're empty. So if we can.
Have for the eclipse, we have a very general poster. It might be out beside your place, Eric's that has a, you know, QR code that it was, we don't change it every time a new film comes. We actually have just a, I think a generic poster we put in places like that.
I change mine every time I get some.
Thank you.
For the theater. I'm one of the unpaid, yeah.
You get popcorn?
No, I pay my way, man.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Great job, guys.
And, uh, we will see in.
That's good, positive trend.
Come see a movie. Come wear pink to Barbie or what is it?
Oh, yeah. Like the last, uh, two movies.
Yeah.
Did you see Mission Impossible? I did. It reminds me a lot of myself.
He does. I think the same thing, Jeffrey.
He does.
All right, uh, planning commission decisions. I don't know why I was gonna whack that. For the eighteenth, anybody have any, uh, anything to talk about? All right, with that, we move on to legislative review. Start with roofing materials ordinance for second reading tonight. Rick.
Council and Mayor, no. Uh, here for the second reading of, uh, post-ordinance, prohibited, uh, real wood shingles on roofs in Breckenridge. That would be on new construction and re-roof projects as well. There's been no changes since the last reading on July eleventh. Main reasons for proposing this prohibition are insurance on structures with wood shingle roofs is difficult to impossible to secure. And wood shingle roofs are a leading cause of fire ignition and fire spread. I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
What's the good thing about them?
It, it look, the look is.
Is aesthetics? Is that why people would even do that?
Yeah, I think it's aesthetics, um, although that, uh, trend is kind of fading.
Yeah.
They're not very bog anymore. They barely ever get spect, uh, the wood is now mainly on the walls.
And does a community with, you know, kind of, uh, when, when it's still allowed or even embraced, does that affect the insurance rates for the whole community, other buildings that, you know, in other words, not necessarily having the, the wood shingles?
Yeah, I think it would, um, very lightly, um, trickle through some of the, uh, some of the insurance, um, you know, audits of, of communities and construction materials and fire wise or not. It may.
But they almost double my, I don't know if you guys, they almost double my home, my, uh, homeowner's insurance.
That's what we've been hearing and that's what kind of launched the start of this.
Other questions for Rick?
No. Rick, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Uh, building code amendments.
Hello. I'm Jesse Lander, administrative supervisor for community development. And this is a second reading of a council bill that would update the building code. There's a couple of minor updates. The first thing is, uh, updating the standard codes adopted by reference. And the second one is correcting an error in the electrical permit fee schedule. Uh, there have been no changes since the first reading. And we can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Thanks very much. Uh, parking code amendments. I guess I'll do this one.
Yeah. She's gonna become the face of.
Hello. Evening or afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, before each day for second reading, we have the parking code amendments that changes the parking for duplexes and front homes, both in and out of the parking district. Um, this updates the parking count outs, required outside of the district from one point five to two for duplexes and townhomes. And adjusts how we, um, allow for, um, the max parking maximum to be resolved, uh, when there's uneven allocation in town home units inside the district. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions? All right. Thanks.
Sweet.
Outdoor sales day amendment. Mr. Truckee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, this ordinance would allow outdoor sale days where merchants can put their merchandise outside. Um, on two weekends, Labor Day and Memorial Day. No changes since first reading.
Any questions?
No, thanks for, uh, getting, getting this done, you know, I appreciate that.
Mark, have we been, has this ordinance been noticed by the, uh, retail community at all? We can input it all.
But we did hear from, go ahead.
Uh, we did hear from Blair with the Chamber, who's been working on some things for the retail group. And she asked specifically about this.
Okay.
Ordinance and then mentioned that they might look to a Thursday in early December to do a third outdoor merchandise.
Which will still be allowed in the code as long as they give notice. To, uh, the manager.
Back. Support, yeah.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, two thousand twenty-three budget appropriations. This is a resolution for this evening.
Hello, Dave.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I've got a quick summary of changes to our budget since we did the last one in February. They, excuse me, basically, um, on the general fund, we were adding about eight hundred ninety-one thousand of expense. The ADA consultant that we have retained and started to work, that's the expense this year for that on their study. The FERC grant for five hundred thousand that we did a couple, a couple of months ago. Um, along with that, the public evacuation science for two hundred thousand for public safety. Um, we did add some money in the retirement committee that was not in the budget in twenty twenty-three. Summit County Rescue, that was discussed probably back in to twenty-one, I guess. And that came through and, um, uh, we are going to, uh, bring on a sales tax audit consultant. We're doing sales tax compliance now, um, just making sure folks are following our, our code. But, uh, we are going to undertake auditing businesses in twenty twenty-four to make sure their sales that they're reporting are correct.
How long's it been since we've done that, Dave?
We used to do random so many a year, right? And, uh, I can tell you that it, nothing probably has happened at least in two years.
Okay.
On that, but I mean, we've done some, uh, you know, Dave and his team have unearthed a few things recently that needed to be addressed.
But just things that bring attention to themselves, not just random.
Uh, both. Yeah.
And this will be random going forward?
Yes.
Good. I mean, I think it's important.
Yeah, it is. And we've always, there was stuff in there, but it, you know, was it always getting done or, you know, following through and then there were staffing issues? And so it kind of kept falling on the priority list of stuff, I think. So.
Makes sense to announce it. Shouldn't you just kind of be stealth?
Well, I have to get it in the budget. So.
Knows until they're selected and then they, then they're notified that they're gonna be, they'll do an audit. Knows until they're selected and then they, then they're notified that they're gonna be, they'll do an audit, right? Then you just.
But is your retroactive or is it going forward?
Point is for people to do it properly. So even if they're just.
They're auditing their books. So they go back.
Back and pull and just back.
Just back.
Oh, that's forward because you haven't done it.
You haven't done anything yet. Get you. Good work.
About a hundred and eighty grand this year so far of taxes that we might not have gotten otherwise.
Wow.
So it's working.
Yeah, good work.
On the utility fund, um, we had an accounting change based upon the audit. So we, um, booked the thirteen million dollar loan for the Tarn Dam. We read, we did that for twenty-two, so we took revenue out of the budget, uh, in twenty-three. It's not going to change the fund balance, but that's a change we needed to make on the utility fund. Capital fund, there was an approval done a while back for Broken Land Sidewalk that, uh, has been added. Um, I opened up a CD with First Bank to take advantage of the rates right now, six month CD. So that's going to give us another three hundred and eighty-five thousand of interest.
What's the rate?
Five point three nine.
For how long?
Six months.
And how much you have to put in?
Five hundred thousand.
Should I? Well.
Put in or?
What's the, what's the, what's the?
I would say whatever you've.
It's the same for the general public because, you know, the town, that's where we carry all of our operational dollars. So I mean, we may have fifty million setting.
So you get a bro deal.
So they work.
All right, yeah, I just, I just.
You know.
Cause it used to, CD rates used to be like six percent for just sort of civilians and then it's.
Probably could go do something with them.
All right. What's how you spell your, his last name?
B Y R D.
Yeah, I might have to, so.
So making about four and a half percent now on our operating money at First Bank. That just changed, so. Yes, yeah. Um, for the affordable housing fund, ten thousand dollars, we approved for the for workforce rent assistance. Um, and then on open space, which I saw the agenda, there might be another, um, I don't know. But, um, we're have three point four million that was done after February, so we put that in the budget. And then there's another two hundred and fifty grand we're adding to upgrade the building that was purchased last year for open space. So that's included. And then last is the garage fund. Um, we have purchased three electric buses. And we're going to get reimbursed for that. We had the revenue in the budget, but the expense was not. So we've corrected that going forward, but we need to get that into the budget for the garage fund. And then the snowplow, which we had, um, in two thousand twenty-two is, we got the snowplow in twenty-three, so that's reflected there. So five point five million reduced revenue, seven point three million increased expense. So our new budget and the budget walk, we're spending about twenty-nine million more than the revenue in the budget. Based upon the July disappropriation. You know, I want to say Justice Center is probably twenty million of that, so it does not impact cash. We got the money for that. And then the loan that we talked about for the Tarn Dams, around six million. So that leaves about three. So we're, we're okay from that perspective from a cash flow.
Excellent. Questions? Other questions?
Yes. What other money would you like to? You know, I'm. If someone would ask me what our budget is, what's our budget? Like, like a friend of mine is a selectman back, back in Boston. He said, what's your budget? And I thought it was like sixty million. Is that?
Oh, no, we have about a hundred and, our original budget without transfers is around a hundred and twenty-five million in revenue. But the, what you see in your budget walk is a gross number. It's about a hundred and eighty million.
But that's what I tell them, a hundred and eighty million.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
It should not be that much.
Explated if I were you. Tell them you're.
Pretty important.
Not be that much in twenty-four, I don't think.
For the reserves that we've got kind of set aside for rainy day fund.
Um, well, when we did the retreat, the Beaver Run, what was that, a month or two ago? It's around twenty-three million, I think, that was there.
How much?
I will reassess for twenty-four. Yeah, I'm sorry.
How much in restricted reserves?
Probably about a hundred and, that's on my sheet.
You guys trying to get a jumpstart on the, uh?
We have a hundred and sixty-one in restrictions.
Sixty-one million dollar number, you know, we're a hundred and eighty-five, whatever the sum up is. And they go, we got a hundred and eighty-five in reserves. They don't realize a hundred and sixty of them are.
Restricted. Yep. Other questions? Hey, thanks. Hey, for nine one one.
All right, chief.
Mister nine one one himself.
So this resolution, if approved by council, would approve an amended IGA with, uh, Summit County and the other municipalities. In addition to the fire districts. In the winter, the nine one one center underwent an assessment by a company called Talleyan Defense. And they came back with several recommendations to improve the center. One of the major ones was to change the governance structure. Uh, currently, uh, there's two boards. Uh, Rick sits on the policy board along with the other managers in the county. And then there's an operations board that I sit on along with the other chiefs. And, uh, so the recommendation of the group, and it was ultimately approved by the policy board. That we switched to a one-board governance structure, uh, which required this change to the IGA. Consortium originally, the original IGA was in two thousand and one. It was then amended again in two thousand and ten. But prior to my time, I'm not sure the reason why, but this would, uh, just bring the IGA in alignment with the recommendations of the assessment.
Yeah, questions?
Are you and your team in favor of it?
Yes, absolutely.
This is a.
Yeah. Anything we can generally do to get the managers out of the decision-making process is generally positives.
We're gonna change the number too.
Yeah.
Nine one two. Shake it up.
Other question? Thank you, chief. He's the guy that's gonna come down right now and yell at us about our money. It's the auditor.
Oh, that's the auditor.
Yeah. Scary. So don't, don't ask any weird questions. He was staring you down.
Step so that I would be easily identifiable. Making me look bad.
To introduce, uh, Jim Hinkle. He's our auditor for the town of Breckenridge. Um, Jim has now done two audits for the town and helped us out last fall. When we had a situation with our other auditor who could not perform it. So he was able to come in and get twenty-one wrapped up for us in December. And this report he's going to go through today is two thousand twenty-two's audit, which I know is quite large. Is on the website for your review. And, uh, so go ahead, Jim.
Uh, thank you. My name is Jim Hinkle with Hinkle and Company CPAs. And we did perform the annual audit for the year end in December thirty-one, twenty-two. Uh, just to kind of give you a little brief, uh, synopsis of our firm. We've been in existence for about twenty-five, twenty-seven years. Uh, we do audits in governments all across the state of Colorado. That includes cities, towns, counties, school districts, charter schools and colleges and universities. Uh, specifically, we audit about twenty-five to thirty cities and towns, uh, including Silverthorne. And Dylan here in the county, Grand County, Lake County, um, Golden, Inglewood, um, Windsor. Um, whole bunch down in the Colorado Springs area, Canyon City, Manito Springs. Uh, so we, we do quite a lot of work in the government area. And are very, very familiar with the government accounting standards. Um, but mainly with an audit, what we do is we come in at the beginning of the audit and we update our understanding of the town's internal accounting controls. Specifically, we're looking for segregation of duties and accounting transactions in a very simplistic form, uh, occurs in three steps. The initiation, the approval and the recording in the books and records. And, and we want to see more than one person involved in those processes so that not one person can just do something without anyone knowing that. We also identify the control features, the approval process, the account coding, um, things of that nature. Uh, and we test those through random samples. So we select random samples of dispersments and random samples of payroll transactions. And we're looking for those to determine whether those control features are operating as intended and that they can be relied upon. So in, in this phase, we don't really, uh, worry about material transactions. Uh, we're looking at the control features, whether it's a two dollar transaction or two hundred thousand dollar transaction. They still need to go through those same approval processes and recording processes. Uh, all of that work really creates two things for us. One is it helps us to determine whether or not there are any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. Now, those are terms of art for us. So a significant deficiency is a design flaw that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness would be a significant deficiency that would result in a material misstatement to the financial statements as a whole. And based upon our analysis, as well as our random testing and all of our work, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. That's the answer that you all want to hear. That also allows us then to go in there and assess what we call audit risk. It helps us to determine how much detailed testing we're going to do in the actual account balances. Uh, and then we go in and we actually audit the financial statements. We use what we call substantive testing, which is mostly test of details. Just pretty much what it sounds like. We drill down into account balances. And we look at the underlying transactions and we compare those to supporting documentation such as invoices, contracts. Uh, deposits, things of that nature to ensure that the account balances are recorded correctly. Uh, we also use a lot of analytic review where we're comparing the current year to the prior year, current year to budget numbers. Uh, balance sheet to revenues and expenses. And we're looking for relationships that we either can't explain or, uh, didn't anticipate. And if we find any of those, we do more test of details on some of the specific accounts. The end result of that is our audit opinion. And it is what is referred to as an unmodified opinion. In layman's term, that means a clean opinion, states that the financial statements have been prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. And apply it on a consistent basis with the previous year. Um, we also, the last couple of years, uh, the town has required what's called a single audit. And that is with respect to the federal audit, uh, federal award programs where you receive federal money. Just a real brief history back before nineteen eighty-four. Uh, if the town received money from two or three different federal departments, transportation, energy, health and human services, you'd have different auditors from all those, uh, agencies coming in and auditing their own federal award programs. In nineteen eighty-four, they passed the quote, Single Audit Act. It's also referred to as the Yellow Book. Uh, because it was printed on a yellow cover. Um, and, uh, basically said you're gonna have one audit and that is that the financial statement auditors are now held the responsibility for auditing compliance with federal wards. Uh, anytime that the town expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in any one year, you're required to have a single audit. And then we follow the federal guidelines to choose exactly which programs, uh, need to be audited. Uh, we issue two opinions in respect to the single audit. The first one is what we refer to as in compliance with government auditing standards. And it is basically looking at the town as a whole and ask the question, does the town have the internal controls in place to determine what federal award programs it receives and what the compliance requirements are? And then whether or not we find any instances of non-compliance in any, uh, federal award programs throughout any of our testing. And while that sounds pretty easy on the surface, a lot of times the, the federal wards are passed through the state and other agencies. And sometimes it's a little bit more difficult to determine how much federal awards, uh, the state has combined with the state funding. And they're supposed to tell you and sometimes they do a great job of it and sometimes they don't. Um, but, uh, that's basically this first opinion. And our opinion is an unmodified clean opinion, that the town does have the internal controls to determine what federal programs it participates in and the compliance requirements. And that we did not find any instances of non-compliance in any of the federal award programs throughout our testing. The second one is in compliance, what's called the uniform guidance. And that is where the federal government tells us what specific programs we need to test in detail. Uh, and I believe we tested the Tarn Dam, uh, monies being spent. And there we actually select a sample of dispersments. Uh, we look at the compliance requirements by the federal government and we drill in to determine whether or not the town has complied specifically with each and every compliance requirement of that program. And that is also a unmodified or clean opinion that you do have the internal controls with respect to that program to ensure compliance. And that we did not find any instances of non-compliance with respect to that program that we tested. So three opinions, basically overall, uh, in the financial statements, all of them are unmodified or, or are clean opinions. Um, along with this financial statement, we'll issued a, what we call a required communication letter. And that is we are required by our standards to communicate in writing whether or not certain things occurred in the course of the audit. And we have nothing to communicate in that letter. We did not have any difficulties in the course of the audit. We did not have any disagreements with management. Uh, interestingly enough, we're required to tell you if we are aware of management talking to other auditors. Uh, that goes back to the old opinion shopping days to where if we disagreed with the accounting methods used by the town, then they would just go find somebody else until they agreed with them and fire us and hire them. And we did not have any instances of that. We didn't do that. Also, we did not have any audit adjustments, uh, where we found errors in the books and records and required an adjustment to be made. Uh, nor did we have what we call past adjustments where we found small errors in the books and records that were not material to the overall financial statements. So we did not have any of those, uh, in, in either one of those. Um, I will talk just real briefly about the structure of the financial statements. Just take me a couple of minutes. But before I get there, one of the main things I like to communicate to the council at the end of an audit is that um, throughout the audit process, we felt like we had open transparency. Everything that we asked for, we were provided in a timely fashion. We were never kept from any information or denied access to any documents. And so we felt like we had the ability to ask for whatever information we needed or supporting documentation to be able to do an audit under our standards. Uh, and, and so I think that's important for you all to know that we had that open transparency. Um, that's basically what I talk about on the audit process as far as what we do to verify the accuracy of the financial statements. Um, I know you haven't had someone come in for the last couple of years and talk, so. How long? Two or years. Uh, I will mention this, that, uh, the financial statement is, that you all have is called an ACFA. Um, you may have heard it referred to as a CAFRA back, uh, several years ago. They changed the, the order of the, uh, words to the acronyms different now. Uh, it is very diff- uh, detailed and, and, uh, extensive. Um, but primarily you have three basic financial statements. The first one is what's called the government-wide financial statements. And it looks at just the total of the governmental activities and the proprietary fund or utility fund activities, uh, in, in separate groups. And it is on what's called a full accrual basis. And, and that is the same as any other big business, uh, Apple, Microsoft, um, General Mills, General Electric, et cetera. Um, and so that way people can, can compare your financial statements at governments to those big companies. The second one is on what's called the government funds and it breaks out each individual governmental fund that you have. And that's on a sources and uses basis, which in accounting terms, we call that a modified accrual. It records all the revenues that were either received during the year or will be received shortly after year end, accounts receivables. And it records all the expenditures that occurred during the year or that will be paid shortly after year end, accounts payable. So some of the differences are if you get a, uh, a loan, the loan proceeds on a governmental funds basis is recorded as revenue because it's a source of. the loan proceeds on a governmental funds basis is recorded as revenue because it's a source of funds. Whereas on the full accrual, it's not run through the income statement because it wasn't earned revenue. And that's the major differences between those. Uh, the governmental funds is showing the the taxpayers all the sources of of money that the government has available to us and all the uses of that, whether that's spending on capital assets, paying down debt, all of those are expenditures because there are uses of those uh, resources that the government has available. And that is different than the normal business. A normal business does not have that kind of a a financial statement. The third one is the uh, the the business type activities. And and that's on a full accrual, just like uh, the first financial statement. You just have more detail of the different funds that make that up. And and finally, the main difference between a governmental activity and a and a business type activity is the source of revenues. Generally speaking, not exactly, but generally speaking, a governmental app, uh, revenue or excuse me, a governmental fund is a fund whose revenues are supported by more than fifty percent in tax dollars. Whereas a business type activity, uh, more than fifty percent of the revenues are generally from fee for services or charges for services. So that acts more like a business uh, than taxing, though you can't have tax revenues in a business type activity. Um, so that kind of gives you a little bit of a background of that financial statement and how it's put together. Um, finally, two things I'd like to say. Number one is, uh, we as auditors are technically working for you, the council. Uh, we are technically hired and fired by you all, the council, but we work with management in the audit process. So there is technically an independence there from management. So theoretically, I could come up here and say anything I wanted to for or against management and feel comfortable that I can do that because I'm hired or fired by the council and not by management. Um, and and finally, uh, this is a big document. Uh, an audit process is a uh, involved process. We ask for a lot of information, a lot of documents, ask a lot of questions, and all of this work is in addition to the accounting department's normal day-to-day workload. So, uh, it is a lot of extra work, and I do appreciate all of the time and the commitment that the accounting department has made to get this financial statement finished and the audit complete. Um, and uh, it has been a process, but it was a very good process. And thank you to David, Tracy, and all of his team, uh, for giving us the attention that we need to be able to get through the process in a timely fashion. Uh, this is due to the state on Monday, the thirty-first, and it should be filed with the state on a timely fashion.
Excellent. Questions?
I know you read the whole thing.
I am stealing the term clean opinion, though. I'm gonna be using that.
Circle.
I'm mostly describing myself.
Want to say thank you as well. You don't know the work that Tracy does behind the scenes. What we walked into a year ago to where we are today, and uh, so she's, it's reflected in this document and our accounting team as well, but uh, electric gatekeeper, I would say.
Well done. Thank you. And thank you for the audit.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Fire all kinds of questions.
Well, I was gonna see word CD rates.
See if he can get you a better deal. Public projects update.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I do not have any additions.
What?
For you today in the memo, but I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions?
Can you guarantee the dam's gonna be done?
Guarantee what?
The dam's gonna be done on time?
I think the dam is done. It's just cleanup stuff.
Yeah, so.
Around there. We may still have to drain a little. May have to drain a couple of feet of water off of it.
Yeah, so.
Have it keep it.
Nothing to worry about anymore. It's a clean opinion.
We're very confident.
Okay.
That's all you wanted to say.
Just trying to work that.
And on the um, the Coin Valley Road and uh, the Blue River uh, rebuild w- next year at this time, when Excel vacates that oval, will they be responsible to revegetate that, or will, is that on us?
Swell to revegetate per their agreement.
Uh, we were out at uh, Alta Verde two and a lot of, you know, questions came up today and we about the road going through, and we said that it is in the twenty-four CIP. Uh, I mean, it's our goal. Right? Uh, so we're expecting that uh, Alta Verde two will probably be completed this summer. Potentially early summer. They're on a good, good track. Uh, were we gonna do the road in the summer?
Haven't bid it yet. Is there concern?
The goal is, right? Get it built.
Next year.
Is it buildable in what? What's what's the uh, three, six month thing, or what's it take to build?
Really. Eight or four?
Okay.
I think it's good to jump, get that done.
Yep, and uh, also that path, that was the path that they're building, it was our uh, dimensions, and it looks like we're making that a little wider than the old stuff. Do you remember what, was that twelve foot or?
My recollection is it's fourteen feet for the rec path.
Yeah, that's good, cuz that that puts it a little wider to have some of that, and we'll probably you'll see when we do the CIP that we're realigning that path all the way as connect into this part, right? As part of, that's part of that road build, isn't it?
It's not currently in the plans as we haven't brought it to council for the final alignment, realignment of that rec path, but we can.
We should, yeah, we should. Well, when we do the CIP, we probably need to. I I just think that needs to get done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Questions?
Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Mobility. Mo- mobility.
Ability.
Mobility.
They'll back away from Shannon.
Yeah, they're so scared.
Terrified of her.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Now, you get Teddy and myself for mobility and sustainability today, so we're sorry for that. Um, we have one update to each, uh, one mobility, one sustainability. That's in addition to what's in your packet for the mobility, uh, parking wise, we received Jeffrey's feedback on the free after three. Um, needing to be communicated some more, so we are working on uh, a blast that goes out when you open up the parking app that will say, um, you know, pay and play all day free from three P M. to two A M. So uh, we're working on that, and then we're also possibly working on a a temporary banner to kind of get people to recognize the parking structures there, and it's free after three. So we're gonna test out a couple of things this fall as we kind of come into winter and see if that works for us. Um, I'll take any other questions in regards to the mobility update, and then Teddy will have an update, uh, on sustainability.
Questions?
Matt? It's, you know, we're talking about the future of the gondola lots. I'm wondering within that conversation, have you looked at like a wish list or potential expansion for the transit center, different options that we should consider within our?
I think that, um, we have definitely thought about a lot of options. I don't, I don't think we've come to one solution yet, but the transit center is definitely prime for um, expansion for bus service. Um, as it sits now, it's about half the size of the footprint of the bus system needs. Uh, we don't really need all that indoor space, but um, we have begun the thought process of it. Uh, I think our next kind of goal is to start a planning, uh, process for that.
That, that would include potential asks for additional land or different land or, you know, cuz we're in a position to negotiate that.
No, I don't think, I don't think that's at at that level right now.
Okay.
So, but it will, that's something that, yeah, because it your uh, your planning and your layout is is uh, depends on the land, right?
Sure, sure.
I mean, there's a, a footprint that we're allowed based on that agreement that we have in perpetuity for that, which, you know, if if that's where we stick with, then we would have to design around that versus any other alterations, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
But it, you know, now would be the time to to negotiate. If their ideas mesh and allow us to get underneath the gondola a little bit, which might be a great use of that land.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's good feedback. Thank you. Other questions on mobility?
Dogs are still doing well in the the buses and no problems at all.
Whooping on the buses. Fantastic. Um, we are having problems with humans, but uh, the dogs are, dogs are great.
Well, you know, you can't put a shock.
General, that is life.
Yeah.
Dogs are great and humans are not.
More so than normal human problems or?
It's still the same. Um, bikes in buses is working out well as, uh, also, so I think, yeah, we're, we're seeing some positive usership.
It's crushing it, um, just with the numbers and the daily trips. Any thoughts on how to make it better and any thoughts on studded tires for the winter?
Go ahead, Teddy.
We had asked them about, um, you know, winter version of the bikes. They can't just put on fatter studded tires on the existing ones that have to be a different, um, bike altogether, which hasn't been designed yet. So I think the winter program is still ways out, but um, the ridership has been strong. The biggest thing is just, um, bike availability, a number of bikes, and I think we're gonna come back with a budget request for expansion, um, next year. Uh, adding a few more bikes and additional hubs that should help address that.
Have you done any outreach to the shops to see how they're feeling? Now, now that we're in it.
Um, I was on a outreach call with the Blue River Pathways project that Norris Design was doing for that project, but they had one session specific for the bike shops, and we kind of asked them at that session about how it's going and the the one shop that was on the call there said that wasn't really impacting them, so.
Important to, you know, me to point out, eighty-two hundred trips were taken by the, by the bikes in a hundred and forty trips today, and twenty-five percent of those trips are made by pay-as-you throw, go, so in other words, locals. And the average ride was, uh, seven. Hey, no, not, yeah, they have, is twenty-five that were made as from kind of visitors and eight, and then, uh, seventy-five percent were made local only, but the average trip duration was seventeen minutes with the average trip length is one point eight miles.
And that twenty-five percent, that pay-as-you-go is not necessarily visitors.
No.
There's a lot of locals in that.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, but I think the salient point is average trip is at one point eight miles.
Hey, listen, I was all in favor of the bikes from the beginning.
Don't, nobody go back. Don't look at any minute.
I'll throw in, um, yeah, I think, uh, Jeffrey kind of called us on, you know, we're, we're seeing bikes in certain areas of the county that we didn't expect them, and I, uh, ran through right before the meeting as it was starting and looked through the last three weeks of of, uh, the operation since the beginning of July, and we have had four bicycles total. Three were together and one separate, uh, that rode for a longer distance than what we would expect. Um, but only four bikes and three of them were a group, um, just in the last three weeks. So of three thousand trips we've taken, we've had four bikes probably go out of the service area.
I, I talked to a bike shop who brought up, they had seen some where they weren't supposed to be, but they really understood the bigger picture. They didn't have any. And also, you know, you, you, you never know for sure. If someone's driving by on the road and you see a white bike, you assume it's, it's, you know, the Brett measure, it could be. Hey, Matt, have we, uh, there, is the company, um, do they have sufficient staffing and and do we find, do we seem to have consistency in the rebalancing of the bikes and moving them around as needed?
I think, um, I'll let Teddy kind of guess the, well, I'll give you, I'll let him give the detail, but we have seen some turnover in their staffing, but we have seen pretty good consistency. Um, at the very beginning, it was a little rough. I think everybody noticed that. It was kind of, it was a learning process. They were very understaffed. They onboarded a few people and they have kind of corrected that in our opinion, but um, I think feedback is important for us, and Teddy, you have some more of that?
Yeah, we got up to, um, uh, operations staff of four, and then we just lost one uh, last week, so down to to three for local operations staff that live in Summit County, um, handling the battery swaps and rebalancing. Um, and I know Drop is bringing in some of their other folks to kind of fill in while they get that extra position rehired. Um, yeah.
Yeah, so I heard some input and it was just one isolated incident where somebody lived in Silver Shark, Shekel, early in the morning was trying to find a bike anywhere in that vicinity to ride into town and couldn't. And I was like, eh, maybe somebody didn't show up to work.
Yeah, and that's really a result of our own success, I think, you know, it, it's not good to see, but also, you know, the, the pilot is successful. Udi.
Thank you.
Great program. I mean, this is, these numbers are fantastic.
Fully supported.
What is that? It's clear.
It's my clear opinion.
Yeah.
And Teddy has a quick, uh, update that's not in your packet for sustainability.
Yep.
Jesse, just wanted to mention that, um, we're working with Launch Media on a campaign around Skip the Stuff. And, um, they're looking to schedule the kickoff call for that, uh, sometime the week of August seventh. Uh, she said likely Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning and wanted me to ask if there are any town council members that wanted to participate in that kickoff meeting at least to just get it lined out. That's one. Uh, the week of August seventh, and she threw out there that Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning were likely.
Where would it be?
Could do the Tuesday morning.
Uh, I think it would probably be, it's gonna be a virtual meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't make it.
Okay.
It's really mixed bag right now. Some places are doing it already and some places.
Yeah, okay.
Idea.
All right, well, we'll sign you up, Eric, and then, uh, Carol can be backup. Okay.
A reminder.
Teddy, is there any update on getting water to the parks so that people can fill their water bottles?
You have an update? They're working on the Prospector Park.
The one park we were looking at was Prospector Park on North Main Street. Were there other parks that I'm not thinking of?
Well, there's not water at any of the parks, right?
So Prospector is the most obvious one that we can do quickly because we have the restrooms there and we have uh, access easier, and so that's the one that facilities, right, had targeted that, uh, I are we trying to get that this summer installed the water fill station there this summer?
Park. River Park has water. There's an outdoor water fountain at River Park alongside the restrooms.
But there's probably not at the train park and, um,
Train does not. You'd have to go to the ice rink and use the restroom there.
So I guess I would really like as part of this process of getting rid of plastic water bottles, I think we need to have a lot more
Yes.
available water fountains throughout town. It doesn't have to be at parks. They just parks just seem like a very natural place for them to be, but I think we need to have a lot more opportunities for people to refill.
Do we have cisterns? You know, kind of cool looking, cool looking cisterns? Which you dip a wooden ladle into.
I, I think it'd be preferred to have nice potable water.
Plastic thing and it's gravity fed and and, uh, yeah, I mean, you know.
You just let Shannon and James.
The way you have to lay pipe, you know, so, but if you had a sister, and if you had a sister, and you wouldn't have to do that. They have systems all over the place.
We are targeting locations where we already have the water infrastructure to add it, such as Prospector Park, and we'll keep looking at more parks. That one's our main focus. But we can also start looking at the ice rink. Go ahead and find another one.
If you, if you could consider.
Creative thinking there. I appreciate that.
Wooden ladle. Option.
His little spout. I did see it, uh, it, I meant to mention before at C U's graduation, they had, uh, these little, like, they were three or four foot, just little carts that probably had three or four stations on either side, and they were really simple and you know, and then they had some kind of like little plexiglass thing up in the middle where they had some.
Didn't we look at one of those?
We've ordered two of those. They're individual. They'll be here within the next.
Awesome. And they hold water, right?
That you need to be connected to.
Oh, they, oh, it's not a sister.
It's not a sister.
These were.
Redden or a cistern.
Yeah. I know we were looking at those and we talked about it, but the, yeah, I meant to mention to you because those sisters were really simple and they.
Well, of course they do.
Is that Popsicle Park has no infrastructure that?
No water. They, they don't get filled with water.
And these have to be like the ones at the rec center where it's like the, the deep one that you, you press and it takes a minute cuz it's so it doesn't freeze and the whole thing. And these have to be like the ones at the rec center where it's like the, the deep one that you, you press and it takes a minute because it's so it doesn't freeze and the whole thing.
Yeah.
That we can use in twelve months a year.
Got one on the outside, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't a po- Popsicle's park has irrigation, right?
We just use irrigation water.
It's the same thing, isn't it?
Well, I drink out of it.
Machines that we did order look exactly what you see at the rec center, Jeffrey. Um, with like the, okay. Put your water bottle in and.
And it's connected to a pipe. Okay.
Yep.
So we heard you.
We'll follow up on that.
Teddy, you. Um, you know, this might be a question for H C three, but it, it would, it'd be nice if uh, if we could recycle clam shells. It's just, I hate to see them being thrown away and I see businesses throwing them away. And, and I know some businesses hire someone to go down to Boulder and, because I guess they take them down there. Are they throw, I mean, is that kind of a, kind of useless recycling? Do we think that they're not being recycled? Or should, should I, we talked to H C three C, once every few weeks they could.
I think Jesse might be going there.
Yes, yeah, that might be Jesse right now.
Uh, no, I, I think that that's something we'll have to take back to her and talk through it with her.
Yeah, that's, that would be, yeah.
Yeah, it would um, it'd be a, a major renovation and upgrade to the Murph, the mid, um, at the scrap. Um, in order to do that.
Okay.
Right.
You know, this meeting.
Yeah.
I'm not having a good meeting.
That's not a clear option for me.
Opinion either. Your option. Anything else? Thank you. Yeah, Jay.
Jesse did ask me to just kind of take two seconds and, you know, uh, talk about what we've been working on with um, the restaurant portion of uh, the plastic pollution ordinance and what that looks like. You know, we're tackling three major uh, categories and that's cups, silverware and the clam shells that you put food in. Um, I think, you know, the, together we kind of came up with a plan to identify somewhere between three and ten products that will work for restaurants that we can kind of put out there and say, hey, these are options. These are things that fit the ordinance. They are available. They're somewhat in price. The, the price realm and that uh, you know, and then once we identify those, we'll source them saying, okay, this is, you know, available through Shamrock US Foods, Cisco, Amazon, Webster and then also price them. And that way we're not kind of, we're not overwhelming. Some of the lists that we've seen are like books like the audit, right? Like of this much, hey, here, you know, find something you want. We, we're trying to not say it's an exhaustive list, but say, hey, here's like five recommendations from each. And then once we identify the, the best five or whatever it is, that we'll go back and inform the district managers from each of those um, sources, the broadliners, the Webster, they, you know, wherever it is. Uh, to say, hey, you know, this, you may see an influx if you can add to your slot um, for next July. And so that's the kind of the, the game plan we have right at the moment, just to at least be able to provide the small business is in this uh, community, a, a tool to say, here's a one pager of, you know, fifteen items total that you can kind of take a look at and see what fits your operation the best. That's what we're doing.
Hold on.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Jay.
All right, housing childcare.
Hello again.
Hello, hello.
We did not have anything in your packets. Um, but I, I did have one update. You know, we're getting through the process of the um, Stables lottery results. And um, sometime within about a week, um, those folks will be reached out to by the realtor and start the process of getting people under contract. So um, we're, we're finalizing the deed restriction. And um, I wanted to check in with the council on one issue and, and that has to do with ownership of other properties. Um, I know we talked about whether um, uh, a buyer of a triplex unit could own another property. He said absolutely not. And then we decided that, you know, for the duplexes and the singles, it might not be unusual for somebody to own another property in town. Um, and so um, um, you know, we didn't have the same restriction that you couldn't own anything. But as we're drafting the deed restriction, I think um, we're considering putting a clause in there that limits the number of other properties you can own in Summit County residential. Um, but obviously wanted to vet it with the council before we finalize the deed restriction.
If you owned another property that you were collecting rent on, I assume that goes on your income statement, right? And we get to see that.
It would be income, but you know, those units are not income tested either. Um, the higher AMI units aren't income tested. So um, we may not see their income.
Right.
I mean, we're. We really think that the next time we do a lottery, we should limit the number of additional properties somebody can own. I think we should too. And so, you know, especially if we're gonna put it in the deed restriction, then we should limit it right up front. Now, we didn't do that on this one, but moving forward, we want, and I think, you know, it's uh, you know, people may retain a condo, they're moving up, right? They keep that condo for rental properties or something as that, but I don't know what that number is, but I think we would lean to one additional property.
I'm down. I would think one also.
And we could, we could make sure that they can't short term it.
No, if they own a other, uh, one other developed residential property, um, we were not contemplating um, restricting it into the deed restriction. It really does get into the weeds.
How they're using.
They might own a rental.
We could take one of their lottery balls away if they're, they do have another property.
But that would be too complicated within the system.
Be too complicated to put in a deed restriction that you can't own another property that's a short-term rental. Um, uh, it'd be difficult to monitor over time. Um, you know, when they acquired one, whether they started renting it, whether they only rented at Christmas. You know, it, it does open up a whole nother can of worms.
Couldn't it be a scenario where you're living in a condo, it's kind of tight?
Uh huh.
And uh, and you kind of, you know, shoot for the moon, put your, your lottery, your uh, your ball in, in the tank, continue, you know, to get drawn. And, and, and then you.
And your cistern.
You, you, yeah, you would, you wouldn't know if you got, if you're gonna, you'd be chosen. You're gonna, you're gonna live in the place you can hang on to it. Also, and you're chosen. So, you know, you, you're gonna move into this, this stillson, you know, and I, it's, I think it's reasonable to hang on to the property to, you know, to see if you like it, to see, you know, if, if it's gonna work for you, if you can afford it. Oh, I, yeah, I, I don't know. I think, I, I think there'd be a lot of people like that when you're upgrading, you know, you kind of want to step up.
Yeah, you know, our normal deed restriction that addresses no residential unit. Um, uh, that's the case in, I think Valley Brook and um, some of our other neighborhoods where you cannot own another property and buy into Valley Brook. If you do, you have ninety days to dispose of that other property after you close on your um,
Right.
unit. But in this particular case, and that would be the same situation for the triplexes, that you may own another property. If you get a triplex, you've got ninety days after you close on your triplex to um, sell the other unit.
After you move in.
But going down, you know, in perpetuity, we did um, not really want to restrict how they use that other property. I think it gets pretty complex. Um, but a lot of the people that I talked to, at least at the open house, um, you know, they have a rental or they have a deed restricted unit, or they do have another small unit. And those, I got questions from those people who were interested in the um, the single family or the doubles. And um, we told them at that time you could own another property. Um, and we didn't have any restrictions on the use of that other property. Um, but now we're just thinking about restricting the number of properties. Um, one seems realistic, but if you own five or ten other properties, um, it becomes, you know, a bit sort of confusing why you need um, a subsidized unit from the town.
I think I heard some feedback from neighbors where they're like, how can someone hold on to another property, short-term rent it? Use it somewhat as a cash cow, but then live in deed restricted housing. So I think we already made that decision. I don't know that we can go back on allowing other property, but I think one is plenty and we, we should revisit for other projects, allowing any sort of other ownership.
I mean, Missy Middle is a new product type for us to be working on, so weren't quite sure what we would see. Um, and yeah, we did get that question quite often. I have a small rental, you know, or something like that. And so I think that's.
Imagine.
That's what we imagined.
Like we have a rental.
Yeah, uh huh.
I think one's max.
All things.
If we're looking at us, if we're playing scenarios though, and someone that's lived here for fifteen years has a couple, couple of gold camp units that they long-term rent, should they be penalized? And not be able to get in where that is, they're not, they'd be able to create wealth through uh, Stables lot. You know, you're looking at two percent appreciation. The only time that they're not be able to gain any equity is in these gold camp, two gold camp condos that they own, but they're not be excluded because of that.
If they're, the problem is if they're long-term rented, I'm fine with it, but we, we can't say if they're not. What if they're short.
Say that they are.
Okay. What if they're short-term rented? Then, then I don't agree. Then I don't agree because they're exacerbating the problem. Short-term renting a gold camp unit.
But we're putting assumptions that maybe they are short-term renting it. I feel like that this is, this is for the middle management. These are for the people that want a quality of life that they can't get where they are, but they also can't build any equity in there in what they're doing. And so if they, they do have two long-term rental units, w- we're, we're telling them that they have to sacrifice building equity in themselves and their family in order to have a quality of life and live in a quality neighborhood. And I, I just, I think it needs a little more discussion.
For me, Jay, i- it's not a question whether they're short-term renting or not. And yeah, and I hear you. You know, I, I, I wanna help people get to a place where they can, you know, build equity. However, there's such demand for people that are just desperate to buy their first and just to get a place that they can live and stay in this community at work. I mean, the, the, there were three hundred balls for thirteen spots in this last, I mean, the demand is huge. And to me, to include somebody that already has gotten to a point in their stability and, and their financial ability to own two other condo properties, more than one other property. I, it, there, y- you make a compelling argument to allow it. I would like to try to make an argument that says there's just such demand that they're okay. I mean, they're, they're, they're in a position to, if it's a real priority for them to have a single family home, they can sell those two units and, and probably get a single family home. These are people that are desperate just to stay here and just to be able to buy their first place and buy a place. And the demand is enormous. So for that reason, I hear you and don't disagree, but I feel one is max. I, I, it's a stress for me even to get to one. I probably prefer none, but I'm okay going to one. And it's due to demand.
And I, and I, I hear that and I just, I worry about coming across and being heavy-handed where we're forcing people of our community to stay at a certain subsistence level in this case. And I think, and I worry about that and I worry about thirty years from now of looking at it and going, you know, through the cycles of you know, what are we setting up with this precedent and how does this deed run through when we look at when, when there's different problems or maybe some are alleviated and some are not. And is, is this really? This really where we want to be? And maybe it is. I, I don't know. I just.
I think I see your point and I think it is a difficult situation we're in, but just based in the market we're in. I own in Gibson Heights. I can own one property. My appreciation barely keeps up with inflation. But you know what? It's, it's a home. What we're creating is not investments for people. It's homes for people to live. And I think if someone's in the option or in the position where they do own multiple properties, we're not forcing them to do anything. They're in a position where they could sell and likely buy open market sell, hold on to it and thus elsewhere and have a home in one of our properties.
I get it.
This would be only in county that we would.
Yeah, it's, it's developed residential in the county.
So if, if they owned ten short-term rentals in BV, then it didn't matter.
We're not going there.
You know, I, I, um, I'm all over the board on this, but I mean, I, I get, I get like full disclosure. You know, I own, I own two gold camp units when I bought in Vista Point and kept both of them. Um, and rented them long-term, lived in Vista Point, you know, for a few years before I sold them. Uh, just because I wasn't, I wasn't sure I wanted to live there. I, you know, I wasn't, you know, I didn't know, you know, anyway. Yeah, uh, you know, and then, then at my leisure, I sold them when the market was cooperative, you know, and, and, and you know, one at a time. So I.
I'll tell you, the public investment in Vista Point was nothing compared to what it's costing the town to create these Stables units. And like the amount of subsidy that it's taking to get these units um, to the prices where we're getting them is a big number.
You, you might.
Completely different from Vista Point.
Might have just talked me out of backing Jay then.
I think also.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just really quickly just gonna say that we're not changing every deed restriction. So there will still be opportunities for people who might have this different situation. And but like the demand, like Dick said, it's just.
Yeah. I think we're trying to get into one consistent deed restriction going forward, right?
Moving forward, we still have fifteen hundred units right now that.
Oh, you're right.
You know.
Yeah.
That we'll offer in a different way.
Two sides of the coin, I think, to just kind of weigh. One, Silverthorn with their Smith Ranch, they require you to sell, I think, at a hundred days. Once you own in Smith Ranch. So you can't own in the state of Colorado. You can own outside the state of Colorado. So that's one side of the coin. The other coin, to me, it's, it's tied into along the lines of what Jay's thinking, but maybe we consider is as we've looked at going from the town owning or, or funding rentals versus for sale, I wonder if Jay's idea creates this investment where private citizens and, and, and let's say they can own one property that has to be long-term rented. Does that then create this um, essentially fund of folks that are trying to, you know, they're, they're trying to have equity in, in our community, but then it's also creating housing. Is that an opportunity?
The problem is we can't distinguish between short-term and long-term. Ah, from uh. That's what Lori's saying. There's a, since we can't determine that, then you don't know what the unit's being used for. And that's an issue for me.
Yeah, those are, I mean, those are the two choices I think at hand.
Okay. Anything else on this? Oh, go ahead.
I think one thing to think about with Jay's point is that, you know, we've seen this multiple times. You can always make a deed restriction less restrictive. It's really difficult to make a deed restriction, deed restriction more restrictive. We'd have to have people a- agree to it. So if down the road, things change that we never know, we didn't know remote work was gonna be a thing. If we did, that would be an every deed restriction. Um, so if down the road, something changed dramatically with the landscape in Breckenridge, you could always change that number in the future.
Now a little bit, huh? That's a good point.
Um, on another matter, I was very disappointed about the aloe conversation we had. I'm pretty sure that everybody up here assumed that that place was gonna be a hundred percent aloe. Because we were disappointed in Alta Verde one, that we could do that. So I'm not sure where they missed that conversation, but we need to strongly.
Well, they're getting sucked into Comcast game.
They probably are, but they need to understand that this is a big deal for the town. The amount of money we've put into broadband, amount of money we've put into this housing, that can't be, that's not a negotiation. That's just has to be. So.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, we'll have the conversation with Kimball. I don't know how they ended up where they are because we've been pushing that message a long time.
I was surprised when they said they're planning to run COAX and.
Has that ship sailed or? No. I don't think so.
You can't.
No, because nobody's in there.
You cannot deny another person from having that, but we can, if we offer it as part of the package.
Right.
Meaning when you pay your rent, you automatically get aloe. It's built, build it into the rent.
But.
And then they have to go pay on their, out of their own pocket, additional dollars if they want to upgrade or if they want to use another provider. Well, we can tell Gorman, we do not want COAX going to each unit. All we want is fiber going.
We already said no gas. We already said no gas. Why can't we say no coax?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, all we want is fiber going to each unit as far as low voltage.
I suppose.
I mean, I think that's what we say. And then what Rick said, then we include aloe in, in the pack, in the rent. And if they wanna bring Comcast in and, you know, it, running the wire on the outside of the building like they always do based on, on what Gorman's, you know, HOA restrictions are, have at it.
Anything else for housing? Childcare? Ooh, childcare. I just got a letter from Leslie Davis.
Yeah.
That is, um, um. She said that, that you have forced her out. Would assume they're gonna travel. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, committee reports. We had the one from the Recreation Advisory Committee. Any questions? I did, we talked about a couple of things this morning. Um, John, one in particular. We gotta, and, and I had mentioned this before about, you wanna come down?
Come down for a minute.
You can come too if you want. Scott, or what do you call him? Seth, Seth, Seth wants.
You still got a couple of months.
Yeah.
I don't know how the rest of council feels about this, but Kelly and I were talking this morning about this, um, skate park expansion, and maybe it needs to be bigger than what we've been talking about. You know, the thing that I had mentioned to you before about having kids that are old enough that they're, they're too old to do the skate camps. But they like hanging out there. And the fact that a huge chunk of the day is not, it's not open to them. A lot of these kids are going to Silverthorn now, and that's just not. I don't think that's what we wanna do as a community is that, if we have problems with any age group, it's that like end of high school age group and to be.
Well, it's all the way through high school.
Well, yeah, but that did not, we, we're denying them that skate park that a lot of those kids really like. I know there are other times of day they can use it. Uh, my suggestion is we look at a larger expansion so that we can have that open to open all the time, parts of it. So.
So after you gave me that feedback, I said, can we be a little more gray with some of our, you know, if there are some young teens that wanna skate, especially ten thirty, eleven o'clock in those morning times. We've allowed our skate instructors back. Yeah, they can work in. So I don't know if that's helping. It's, I definitely noticed there are some um, incorporating in that. So.
Well, that's great. Thank you for that.
Expansion wise, the challenges we have there, the site is fairly constrained. The rec path, a location of that is part of that, is part of that constraint. Um, the drainage that comes off, like between the turf pitch and the ball field, there's a drainage route there that we need to manage how that flow goes. And then we, I talked a bit with Kelly about this. And then obviously the, the shade structure and then the, the playground, the Kingdom Park Playground. So those, those would be the kind of constraints that we have in there, but I think we can certainly look at it with fresh eyes.
I totally, I totally get it. I, you know, even if the playground had to move somewhere else, I don't know, I don't know where, but you know, I, I think it, I think it deserves a bigger look.
Okay.
You know, it's successful. I know we don't charge for.
We wanted to get rid of the clay cords.
We're turning everything to pickleball. They, they have just broken ground on the, on the replacement of this clay course. So we're.
No, I think those are great too. If we can somehow figure something out, though, that'd be awesome.
We will look at it with, with that in mind. I think, um, generally speaking, you all prioritize skate park expansion as one of your, one of your goals. Um, and the way we were thinking about it was really a, a street line more than a bowl. Um, or a beginner, a beginner small area. So those were, that's kind of a general concept that we were going for. So we'll, we'll take a look and see if there's a better way to make it.
Sweet.
A little better.
Um, just, uh, something I noticed that when we're doing our aquatics stuff for the leisure pool, uh, Silverthorn will be closed as well. So you put in there just that there's reciprocosity.
Reciprocity.
That's it. And, um, just to be aware that, that those will have a weird overlap where we won't have a pool in the county, a leisure pool in the county.
Maggie will be open.
We're hopeful that weather keeps people outside, but yeah, that's something that we foresaw during that.
Cool.
Yeah. The, the leisure pool will be closed that entire time. The lap pool will have to be closed for a portion of that because we have to tear out the floor and run some plumbing underneath. So there'll be a period, I think it's six weeks.
Six weeks, but we're planning eight.
How about the warm tub?
The warming tub is still on the docket. It's still in the programming. So, and the existing, um, kind of defunct hot tub will be gone.
You do laps in that big hot tub though.
Yeah, well, it kinda cooks.
Sounds really good that you stopped.
Anything else for the rec department?
Thank you very much.
No, we just opened all of our fault programs and we're fifty-four minutes into that registration and we have very little left. Um, we're eighty percent full thirteen minutes in.
Amazing, you know.
Build first. So you are right with.
Went to the rec center and seeing, it's amazing. All these kids, yeah, all the programs that going on the, you know, seeing a lot of mountain biking and. John, from your report, sounds like we're at max capacity. Is there any way to expand that capacity in future seasons with planning?
Probably during this time of year, like the, the first sessions where we're outside, actually ten minutes before four o'clock, I just added ten spots to skateboarding. Cause I just first saw that happening where we are space limited and staff limited. It gets a little bit trickier. You know, we've added a, like a secret agent after school camp in partnership with, uh, the sheriff's department and that filled up. Uh, it's one of those things. I'm not sure what it is yet, but it'd be cool, you know, so. Yeah, I mean, they're gonna do CSI stuff and, and, uh, one of the mothers of a child that works for the sheriff's department approached us seven, eight months ago. And, uh, I was like, seven, sounds great.
Yeah.
So we'll have one of our staff and then some sheriffs.
We should talk about a dishwashing camp.
Yeah, good idea.
We know that for every, uh, and, and fill it, but some things are space constrained.
Yeah.
Because we can add, I mean, we can add positions, you know, seasonal positions, which they'll approach us. And we know for every position we add, generally we can service what? Eight to ten more kids.
It's about one to ten ratio.
Yeah, one to ten. So, you know, it's a, and usually that will, uh, does that pay for itself? The cost of that position generally that.
It does. We've increased our subsidy and.
Seeing the demand, I mean, that's something I would be in favor of supplementing to make happen. If you feel like you can do it well and do it safely.
So there's a balance and we're, we're pretty open if they approach us on, uh, those staffing increases, especially when it comes to uh, stuff around programs. Cause we know that we're serving, you know, these three hundred kids a day on average out there. So, yeah.
We open before Frisco. For instance, they do the registration next Tuesday, August second. We do see, and that's intentional on my part. I, I wanna be the first one out there. I wanna see, because if we're in a different economic climate, you know, I, I want people to look at Breckenridge first. So I bet we'll see next week, oh, my kid got into Fun Club. I work more in the center of the county and then we can open up more spots when it comes to that.
Did this launch include some, uh, programming at the Arts District with BCA?
Uh, it did, um, but I don't have those numbers.
That's great. Thank you for working with them to facilitate that. Nice job.
Anything else for these guys? Great job.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, you're here for, uh, events. Uh, events, 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 anything, anything? No.
Alright. I just wanna say thank you to police, especially Lynn Herford, Public Works, Scott Jackman, Kyle Gilmore, uh, Steve Worrell. Big thanks to Open Space and Trails, Tony and Joel. Just making the Fourth of July happen is a huge undertaking. And I mean, Open Space guys went out two, three times that week because trees were falling down and we had big windstorm on Little French. So, um, it's a, it's a big effort and, and thank you to everyone that helped out.
Thank you. Great job, John. Uh, financials.
Man, there's a lot of money talk today.
Lot of money talk, man.
Yeah.
Um, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. So on your packet, you got the June financials, which covers six months of twenty twenty-three. Um, our June sales tax really reflect what was collected from May, from May. Overall, we're three point six million over budget mainly due to phasing. Um, we are one point one ahead in comparison to twenty twenty-two. Our sales, our net taxable sales are flat to twenty twenty-two. Um, however, compared to year to date, May of twenty twenty-three compared to year to date, May of nineteen, it's, um, thirty-nine point seventeen percent ahead of twenty nineteen. So there's still a huge gap in comparison with twenty nineteen. Um, May did take a dip on the net taxable sales by seven point two five percent. Um, mainly driven by, you know, sectors like weed tail, which we have seen a constant decline there. Um, it was twenty-three percent for this May. Um, short-term lodging had a decline of ten percent. Grocery thirteen percent and construction has had a detail, um, a decrease as well of twenty-nine percent. Um, real estate transfer tax was behind budget, um, a hundred thousand, and we are behind last year, one million. Um, so just to keep eye, and keep out an eye on that one. Um, retail in ti- in town and out of town retail is flat to twenty twenty-two. Um, based on the conversation we had last time, I did look, um, deeper into the BTO report. And the rates are actually coming down. I think, um, lodging is trying to drive occupancy, which they did. Our occupancy was a little bit higher for May and June. However, year to date, both the rates and the occupancy are behind twenty twenty-two. That's on your, on page ten. Um.
What, can you, do you know occupancy compared to two, to twenty nineteen?
Um, just looking really quick at the numbers, occupancy is behind twenty, twenty nineteen. Um, but the rate.
Collection changed, I believe. Sorry to step on you there. Just wanna make sure that was, we, we're measuring it differently.
Correct.
Apples are oranges.
Right. Yeah, we, maybe. We have the last two years or.
And you're talking room nights, not occupancy.
Correct. Occupied room nights.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, it's, it's hard to compare to DMX, but also just looking at twenty nineteen, the rates are way really lower, um, compared to what we're currently charging.
I mean, anecdotally, it seems town is packed.
Yes.
That's not everyone's perception, Jeffrey. Um, there's business people in town. I mean, Crystal ninety-two, ninety-three, I just heard on the radio yesterday or the day before, they announced that Breckenridge is the only resort town in Summit County that saw a decrease in net taxable sales through May. Which from this year to last year, which is gonna freak out.
In May, though.
Through May.
But it's in.
Year to date, it is through May.
We're flat to twenty-two.
We're down three thousand, or we're down three in net taxable sales. So, I mean, their statement is.
Flat to twenty-two.
Twenty-two. We're not down. We're down in May, but we're flat to twenty-two.
Here to date, over twenty-two, we're over one point one million, but it's really.
That's flat.
It's flat.
Cause I'm looking sales year to date. Four hundred and thirty-six million, eight twenty-two, year to date twenty-three and four, four million, four hundred forty-one in twenty twenty-two. Is that incorrect? I mean, that's not just May. That's, that's year to date. I'm looking.
So you're looking at net taxable sales by sector?
Page two oh one of our packet. Tax basics twenty, May twenty twenty-three.
Oh, you can see on there the, the change. There's a column that says twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three. Our change is one point one percent. We're, we're down one point eleven percent overall.
No, no, and I'm.
Pretty flat.
Yeah, it's flat, but it's being sensationalized. I'm not criticizing the finance department at all. I'm just, just for our information, it's being sensationalized out there a little bit that we're down. And our sales are down. First time, only one in Summit County. And, um, it's creating a little bit of angst in some of the business sectors, I think. Um, so maybe Jeffrey, the anecdotally, I don't think anecdotally the Fourth of July was that busy. Um, or really June, I think the second half of July has gotten pretty crazy. But, um, you know, and I'm not saying I'm one of them. I'm not really. I mean, I'm, I'm with the, uh, you know, we're busy too, but I'm with the, um, you know, destination management plan and sticking to that. But I, I just for our awareness, we, we can't blow this off. I mean, I think this is something that, that we need to be aware of.
Could we do? What, I mean, you know, it's, it, it could, it could be like interest. I mean, there's so many things that we have no control over. You know, what we, what we need to, what we do and we try to do, and I think we succeed is we're, we're a good host to the people that do choose to come here. And we have amazing amenities like, you know, our open space and our rec centers and our arts and, and all that stuff. So I mean, I don't know what.
I think some of it is a call to go back to more advertising. We don't have.
Oh, I think a lot of it's events. Some of it's advertised. I mean, Jay, you're in the restaurant meeting. I, I was not, but I've now had several conversations with others around it. I don't know if you wanna touch on some of the comments.
Yeah, sure. Um, you know, there was a lot of concern from the small business, small restaurant owners that uh, their sales aren't what they were last year and that, um, you know, that their staffing levels are finally where they can support the sales from last year and that they're not there. And they're blaming that we have free events on weekends, that we don't have events on the week, that the river walks empty, that uh, we don't market to Denver, which we never would do. Um, Vale does a great job of that. Um, and, and so there was, there was just a lot of, I don't know, fear, you know, going, okay, if, you know, we, we've gotten used to this level of sales. And, you know, real quick, when, when we quote the sales ta- uh, net taxable sales, um, I'm, I'm a huge fan of doing twenty-three over nineteen. But that big number that every, every time that we hear that report, you're like, wow, see, you know, thirty-seven percent. It doesn't, it doesn't take into effect that we've had forty percent inflation between nineteen and now. So yes, the sales are up, but that doesn't mean that we're way over nineteen or that there's forty percent more people here than nineteen. It just means that forty percent more dollars have been spent, which probably just barely kept up with costs of wherever those dollars are being spent. But anyway, I digress. Um, you know, there was, there was just a lot of fear of going, what are we doing to make sure that our businesses are busy? And who's making the decisions that we shouldn't be busy? Especially twelve months a year, like why are we not marketing in October and May? Because we still have salaries to pay. We still have purveyors to pay. We still have, you know, and, and one of the co- or a couple of comments made, it was like, hey, we haven't made it yet. And so those of you who have, please allow us the same opportunity you were afforded. And, you know, some of it was, um, was in earnest, you know, understandable. And some of it's just, again, a little, a little fear about what does the rest of this year and next year have in store?
They, did, I mean, did you tell them that the reason we made some of the moves we did was because of an outcry in the community for what was going on?
I, I may have made the mistake of saying, I wish I had a recording of what they said a year ago.
Yeah.
Uh, that it was too busy. They didn't have enough staff and that we need to keep people from coming in. But that aside, uh, that did not resonate well.
It wasn't just, it wasn't them. I'm not talking about them. I'm talking about all the other people during surveys and stuff. And we have too many events where, you know, we have event fatigue. We, we have been making adjustments to how the majority of the people that live in the community, not just the restaurant community, but the majority of the people in the community that have said we're overwhelmed, the town's unlivable, and that's why we did some of the things we did.
And even if you talk about events, in the end, we put a framework and parameters on it, but in the end, we didn't significantly reduce or remove anything.
Yeah, in a lot of the private events anyway, that don't, that we have zero control of. Um, I do think that the next resident survey that comes up is coming out soon.
It was really good for the free tail.
Good.
I mean, yeah, I'm just bringing it up for perspective. I mean, I, I, I think it'd be dangerous for us to set up.
Good. I mean, yeah, I'm just bringing it up for perspective. I mean, I, I, I think it'd be dangerous for us to sit up here and go, we're all great. You know, we think it's busy in town. So, you know, when, when we've got some small business people that are starting to have some fear, as Jay said, which is, puts it very well. I had one long-term retailer share with me, just who I respect, who was very constructive, who told me, you know, Fourth of July, that they felt like we, we didn't animate town quite as much as we have in the past with, you know, some of the activities, like the, the kids, kids, you know, concessions, you know, around the Riverwalk and concessions on Main Street, you know, around there and, and the games and all that stuff up and down the Riverwalk. And none of that was there this year. Talked to Lucy a little about it and I'm, you know, there, there was somewhat budget constrained, somewhat availability constrained, and I'll bring it up at BTO too. I thought that was pretty constructive because she felt like people came for the prey and then left. Whereas in the past, these things kept them in town and you kept them spending money at the, at the merchants in town. So there's some constructive input as well as some of the fear that that is a lot of, I, I just bring it up and, and not to split hairs, I think, well, I was shocked when Crystal reported it and I went back to the reports. I said, that can't be right. And I went back to reports and it is right. But it's, it's a miniscule number. But it's still can be easily sensationalized.
And there are some national trends. Don't forget, I mean, I sent you all that article about what's going on with Airbnb and VRBO. We do more of that business than all the other towns in this county combined.
And we're also trying to find our new normal.
Yeah. Well, our new normal is still forty, over four thousand short-term rentals. And if those are getting affected by this increase in international travel, there, that's a nationwide trend. That's nothing that this council can do anything about. We have not decreased the number of short-term rentals nearly by, by any significant number. So that's not, that is not an effect of anything that we've done. A ten percent decrease in, in short-term lodging for that much.
Well, a lot of that's rate. I mean, the decrease, that's rate.
The majority of it though really is international travel. International travel is through the roof, right?
Yep.
And there are tons of articles all over, you know, stressing that. So I think you're right though, Dick. I think it's good to keep our eye on this and make sure that, I think it's important.
Yeah, you know, Spartan came up. That was a great event for, for restaurant retail. And, you know, it was during a time, now we didn't kill that, the scary did. You know, we got blamed for killing that. This area, you know, chose to not bring them back based on their asks for what they wanted on the scary's land. That, that had nothing, that was on the events committee when that happened. That, that had nothing to do with, with the town. That was all the scary. So, because they need, they were using scary as property. And the forest service. So, so, you know, I just think this is stuff that, that I was, I was gonna bring it up during other business, but it was easy now. So because it really doesn't, this, I'm not criticizing, these guys just provide the numbers and really great numbers. Back to, I didn't mean to derail your
No worries.
Is it worth trying to look at the numbers from an inflation-based perspective to try and threw that up a little just so we can see where, you know, how much the dial needs to evolve? Just a thought.
If we can.
You know, how much of a nightmare it would be to complicate that.
Can definitely try to look into it and, yeah, we'll get back to it. Yeah.
Because we can't really, you know, switching from destiny metrics to, we don't have that occupancy.
Here's this net taxable sales number, just this one kind of report, because that's kind of what we're talking about. These are the small business community in town that's really challenging this and questioning it. So I, I think if we just limited it to this set of numbers, hopefully it doesn't become such a huge project for you guys.
Well, and it's broken down below by industry and, I mean, restaurants are the ones that are suffering the least, restaurants and retail. Most of the other industries are taking the bigger hits.
Like what, what are the other industries?
Weed, grocery.
Weed, weed is the, yeah, the weed tail is the biggest one, but the short-term lodging keeps getting bigger and bigger, up to seven percent this month. It started, you know, like at four or five, seven. Dropping rate, occupants, occupied nights was higher the last two months, but it didn't justify to make up for the difference.
On grocery liquor with maybe the sales shifting?
To restaurants?
No, to, well, to grocery from liquor. Like, I know that you have a group that's one category, but if, you know, there's a huge portion of liquor stores are suffering a little bit more. Like, do we have a sales tax deal with Kroger or something like that where they pay a smaller percentage of sales to, to town versus city liquors or anything like that? Anything that would impact our revenue?
No.
They all pay the same amount.
Yeah.
They might be cheaper too. So it might, there might be some.
But you know, said that the wine and city markets more expensive than
Oh, seriously? Well, there you go. You know, Todd, to your point, the one thing that I switched to is I, I also look at number of covers we do. I don't look at just gross number because covers is really more reflective now and what's happened over the last couple of years.
Well, in, in the
Per, by person? I look at how many people
And the higher sector, that per person too is what kind of crowd you have in town. You know, are they a spending crowd or not?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that
For me, I count it by what they order. So if you order hamburger, you're one person. So I just do it like that.
Can we get that in the packet?
Sure. I'll show it to you offline. I'll show what we're doing.
Entree, do they count?
Huh?
They order an app as an entree, do they count?
They don't. Only if they have an entree. And a large pizza's two people. FYI. All right. Anything else to annoy her with while we're talking about other stuff?
I, I have one more request around, like, we touched on this before, but I, I would love to help us understand the mix of fractional ownership in town under RET. You know, the sales of sales of real estate by category, where it's timeshare, commercial, residential condominium, you know, and has the different percentages. Could we see a graph over the last four, five, six, seven years, however, just showing how those percentages have changed? Cause I think, I know it's not how many exist, it's how many are selling, but it, it still might be interesting to us.
Yep. I can definitely add that to there.
That'd be fantastic.
A graph of the breakout. There's a little table on the bottom by category. He wants a graph for that.
Over multiple years, over ideally like five years or six or seven years even, so we can get past prior to, to COVID because of COVID dang and, and really see the trend of, of what, what of our lodging mix that is selling is fractional, what, what, what is commercial? What is single-family home? Hey, I just think would show some trends and be interesting.
Um, so overall, on our all funds summary, we are ahead of budget by seven point eight in revenue, mainly due to fund phasing and it's the excise fund and property tax. Our expenses are below by seventeen point eight. Nine point five of that is living on the capital fund. Five million of that is living in the housing fund. And it's really just the timing of these projects. Once we start doing the projects and getting the bills, that will catch up. And the rest is just the lower amount of the FTEs on the bottom of that page. That's it. Do you have any questions? More questions?
More, more discussion without talking to me?
Thank, thank you and apologies for sidetracking that one.
Sidetracked by the town attorney tells us something. All right.
You want to do the last item and then take a short break and then we'll go into the next session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Engineering standards. Rules and regulations. Kelly did.
No, I tried.
Kelly, you told us you did. I was relying on you. On you.
All right. Hello again, council and mayor. The engineering standards update is administrative cleanup of our standards. Housekeeping, Jeffrey?
I think so, yeah.
There were no major changes that I think need further discussion. There is a bulleted list of the ones we found to be more major that we wanted to highlight. And then we had to track changes of the document showing what we had edited. If it takes any specific questions you might have.
I'd like to work on the two, in page three fifty-one out of four eighty-five. The objective established of the minor and major design storms are to minimize inconvenience. I think that's good work.
Thank you.
A nice shout out. Thank you, Shannon. All right. Thank you. Take a break?
Break and then come back and make a motion and go into it. Let's take a break. Everybody needs five minutes.
I move that the town council go into executive session CRS twenty-four, six, four, two, four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators concerning property listed inquiring for open space purposes.
And then we need a second on that.
I need a second.
Second.
And a vote.
Roll call, please.
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
I move the town council going to executive session CRS twenty-four, six, four, two, four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators concerning opportunities for the town to partner with the Summit County School District for the purpose of developing workforce housing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Owens?
Yes.
Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Member Sade?
We are in executive.
You probably would like.
We're good?
Time is now six seventeen PM. Executive session has been concluded. Tips, fence in the executive session were the full town council, Scott Reed, Lori Best, Kirsten Crawford, Rick Holman and Shannon Haynes. Town council has discussed in executive session whether to direct the manager to negotiate the acquisition of property for open space purposes under certain parameters, which are confidential for purposes of negotiations. Town council has further discussed opportunities for partnering with Summit County School District, develop workforce housing. For sake of transparency, any final decision as to whether to enter into and execute a final agreement on the acquisition of property is the authority of the manager.
Second.
On paper?
There is no motion on that.
We're done.
I just woke up.
You can go eat now.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the town council of Breckenridge. Regular meeting to order is Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven PM. Roll call, please.
Dick Carlton?
Here.
Jeffrey Bergeron?
Here.
Carol Sade?
Here.
Jay Beckerman?
Present.
Todd Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Eric Mamula?
Yes, we have minutes for July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Anybody want to talk about him?
No, they, they, they pretty much right on.
Minutes stand as presented. Agenda, Rick? No changes? Communications and council, we begin with public comment, non-agenda items only, three-minute time limit, please. That I will close the public comment session. We go to the BTO update. Lucy K. Whoop, whoop.
Evening. I love this kind of new council chamber smell we've got coming back here. I had no idea because I've been zooming in. We have some really fun news. Tamika Jones, who did a piece on Breckenridge last year that aired in airports across the country. And recently she just got this re-aired on Channel Nine, Colorado and Company. We've edited, edited it down to a minute to accommodate your schedule, but we wanted to show you the Emmy. It's the first thing that we've been involved with that has won an Emmy and she is just incredible. And you'll see this, hopefully it will play. If not, I might act it out for him. Come along with me as I head about eighty miles west of Denver, Colorado to a popular mountain town.
Breckenridge has a really colorful history.
That's Lauren.
Founded in fifteen fifty-nine as a mining settlement. Our downtown area is alive and there are thriving businesses, over two hundred restaurants, bars, shops.
So tell us where we are. Are we biking?
Now we are on Borings Pass Road. This is an old railroad bed back from the mining days.
How's it going?
Our guide, Storm Cowgirl with Breckenridge Outfitters, took us to a popular spot on the Blue River.
Slide it on in this net. You want to touch it and let it go?
Nope.
Are you sure?
Okay, yeah.
You got it.
Okay.
Yep.
It is like we could not have scripted this any better and some of you know Amy Subirin.
Yeah.
She won her third Emmy that same night. And she did a piece for Visit Denver. It's base camp, like the idea being stay a night in Denver before you come up to the mountains. So So I just wanted to show her because I thought a lot of you guys know her. One piece on Tamika's that didn't make the cut because we did want to keep it a little bit short tonight. But there was a section on Boreas on the mountain biking part where she's going over some rocks. And it's like, oh, my God, did you get that? Did you get that? I mean, she was just so pure. She's got a lot of great feedback from her friends and peers about like Breckenridge looks like a really cool place for me, you know, kind of thing. So it just is amazing. Melissa and I went to the ceremony that night. Melissa's been doing a lot of work with her this year. We want to keep that relationship going with her because she produces. And she she's just amazing to work with. And Lauren was, you know, behind the logistics on this. This was done last summer, like in July. So I wanted to share that. Um, and this is Melissa Andrews. For those of you who haven't met her, she is our new P R director since what March? Something like that. Cool. She's awesome. Awesome. July fourth parade. Thank you for the kind comments. We got a lot of very favorable comments from a lot of people. I know it's swinging both ways. I was listening, you know, earlier in the work session. But we thought it went really well. So kudos to Majay and all the volunteers showed up. So we had enough people. It went well. Oktoberfest Stein and token sales are live online right now. And on Uller, we just figured out that this year is the sixtieth anniversary for Uller. So we are like spinning to figure out like, okay, what what can we do with that? And how can we pull the community in to make that a bigger thing than just B T O? So don't want you guys to miss that. Couple of things from the Colorado Tourism Office, the Destination Stewardship Council. This is a statewide group. This is the one that includes the First Gentleman. We have hired a consultant who is now going to help us build a statewide stewardship plan. There are subcommittees and I'm on one of those. It's the Rocky Mountain Region Subcommittee. And we'll look at a stewardship plan for the smaller region. And then each of these regions will roll up into the overall state plan. It'll take about a year to fourteen months to get that one done. I have to say that our Be Like Breckenridge campaign is cited frequently, not by us, but by people in the group or the consultants. So this thing really has legs. I would say, you know, Tessa has recently done a presentation at Tedx on B L B. And she's just been announced to do one for the Rotary. So what's really great is this partnership, B L B partnership thing we've been able to put together. We've got twenty five or so businesses in it. The engagement is tremendous, and a lot of the partners want to do more things than we can keep up with. So we're having to dial it back a little bit, but it's really great how this is taking off. And it's really relevant to the conversation that you all were having earlier in the work session about, you know, our point with this is really to help, you know, our visitors integrate better in the community and just be a little easier on the land, a little easier on people and then just be part of part of us. That's really the intent behind it. So that is going very well. I thought I'd touch on lodging because, you know, are we up or down or sideways? As of July twenty three from Key Data, we're within two points of last year. So we're down two percent, which is nothing. That's flat. And this is again without B G V in the data. And August and October are, you know, slightly off like a point. But every other month right now is looking this is pacing the same as where we were this time last year in June. Ended up just a smidge up in room nights. A D R is down. You were talking about the revenues earlier, about eight percent, which I think is good to help drive some of that business. And I wanted to say in terms of the marketing and some of the conversation that happened at the Restaurant Association meeting, we have not cut back on any marketing. In fact, you know, we pivoted and went a little deeper in the funnel, meaning a little more book now kind of messaging. So whether, you know, to some degree, I like to think that marketing helped boost the lodging numbers. But I think a lot of it was just timing. People are booking a little closer in and, you know, we're we're trending is the same as you're a little better than a lot of our offset. So we're I'm pretty comfortable with where we are right now. What's a couple of things we're watching? The percent of people that are out of state destination, thirteen percent fewer, so seventy eight percent of them are staying in Breckenridge. That was ninety percent this time last year. So we've got more people staying down valley and things like that. Seventy percent of our business so far this summer has been out of state destination. Seventy eight percent of them are here and about a little over half are families with kids. So we're hitting the the marks that we're shooting for in terms of who is coming. N P S scores are eighty eight point one. I think it's down a little bit, not much. What Bill is doing is he's taking the guest service recognition. We can't get people into training because of staffing shortages and stuff like that. Just people are not able to come to a half day class. So he's doing custom classes for businesses, but we're also, he's also taking the recognition to the business. So every month if a business has employee, like if Blue River Bistro has a waiter, wait wait staff that are recognized for service, Bill's going to come to your business and recognize that winner in front of your team. And the ones he's done so far, the businesses love it, you know, it's really cool. So we're we're kind of pivoting to match what reality is for the business community here on that score. And then the last thing I wanted to update you on is we are working on the next resident sentiment survey. Again, you know, we're looking at quality of life issues is the main thing, which we do every time. How much is too much? Was too crowded? The events questions? Most of it is going to be the same as it has been in the other years with a few more. We're elevating the quality of life metrics a bit. We have the CAS committee that Carol sat in on, you know, look at what we're measuring for quality of life metrics to make sure we all agree that that's a good base. It's never perfect. You know, you can't get everything in there. But just so we can measure that consistently year over year. So when we say we want to protect the quality of life, we can put something behind that and say, well, it's holding or it's getting worse or it's getting better. Right now, we don't have any one qualitative way to do that. So that's what we want to use this for. So questions? In September, like it has been in the last times we've done it, this will be the fourth one. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We have some second readings of council bills. We begin with council bill number twenty four, series twenty twenty three. This is a bill for an ordinance prohibiting wood shingles on roofs. Roofs.
Good evening, mayor and council and everyone. Rick Fout here, C B O, Breck Building Department with the second reading of an ordinance prohibiting wood shingles on roofs in Breckenridge. That's new construction and re-roofs. There has been no changes since the first reading, July eleventh. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for staff?
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass council bill number twenty four and second reading, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion for council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have the second reading of council bill number twenty five, series twenty twenty three. This is a bill for an ordinance updating the building code. Rick?
Good evening again. Same deal here. There has been no changes since the first reading. This is some simple, I should say straightforward administrative stuff, including one fees cleanup. Does anybody have any questions about this item?
Questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass council bill number twenty five, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a couple of seconds.
I think Jay got the second.
Did he?
Is it him?
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? That roll call, please.
Member Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have the second reading of council bill number twenty six, series twenty twenty three. This is an ordinance amending the development code pertaining to off-street parking requirements. Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council. Sarah Crump, Planner Three, Breckenridge Community Development Department. For the record, this amendment, the parking code updates the land use category to add townhomes, clarifies that duplex, the parking maximum allocation for duplexes in townhomes within the parking service area and changes the parking required number of spaces from one and a half to two for duplexes in townhomes outside the service area. Staff recommends that you pass this on second reading tonight. There have been no changes since first reading. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, will we pass council bill number twenty six, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. We have the second reading of council bill number twenty seven, series twenty twenty three. It's a bill for an ordinance amending the municipal code to allow the display of merchandise outside during Memorial and Labor Day weekends. Mark?
Mayor and council, the ordinance in front of you addresses our outdoor display of merchandise section, which typically limits it to one item per business to be displayed outside. This allows on several weekends of the year to exceed that and be able to display more outside. And those are called our outdoor sales days, weekends. So these have been set in the ordinance as Memorial Day weekend and Labor Day weekend. No changes since first reading. The one thing I would like to note, though, we had a discussion at the work session today about an additional date potentially being set by the manager. The way this is written, it takes out deletes that wording for the manager to establish that date. So what I would suggest, if you'd like to do it this way, adopt it as it's written tonight. I'm going to come back in two weeks with another change to outdoor display that deals with the paddleboard issue that you guys had a couple of weeks ago. And at that time, we can insert that back in. That gives Kirsten time to look at it, and we'll just insert it back in at that point. If that sounds good, council.
Cool. Sure. Sounds good. 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 All right. Any other questions for Mark on this? I know what wanted the public wish to comment on this second reading. Public hearings closes their motion.
Second reading, I move we pass council bill number twenty seven, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yeah.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. We have no first readings this evening, which means we won't have any second readings at the next meeting, which is nice. We have a couple of resolutions. Resolution number fifteen, series twenty twenty three. Resolution making supplemental and reduced appropriations to the twenty twenty three budget. Dave?
Good afternoon, mayor and council, or excuse me, good evening, mayor and council. Dave Bird, Director of Finance. I'm here to recommend a resolution to approve changes to our twenty twenty three budget, reducing the amount of revenue of five million, five hundred and twenty seven, nine hundred and seven dollars and increasing our expenditures, seven million, three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. That'll give us an adjusted budget of around one hundred and eighty one million for the year and expense of two hundred and ten million for the year.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions?
Like how we ruled in those totals. Top of mind.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
With a clean opinion, I move that we make a resolution, a council, a resolution number fifteen, series twenty twenty three, a resolution making supplemental and reduce appropriations to the twenty twenty three town budget.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Thank you, Dave. We have a resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty three. This is a resolution approving and amended and restated intergovernmental agreement for the operation administration financial support Summit County Communications Center Chief.
This resolution, if passed by council, would approve an amended I G A with the Summit County nine one one dispatch center. The amendment is necessary due to adopting recommendations of an assessment to change the governance structure of the center, and I support this passing.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? No. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this sec resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution number sixteen, a resolution approving an amended restated I G A for the operation administration and financial support of the Summit County Communications Center.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. With that, we go to planning commission decisions, and since there were none, we don't have to do anything. Their non-decisions stand as presented. Report to the town manager and staff.
Just one quick item, and if if the council feels that we need, you want more time to discuss this, we can put something in the next work session, but the Breck history will be moving out of their offices that are over, what do we call that? The gaming cabin? It's about seven hundred square feet, and we've been trying to think of what we wanted to use that facility for. We're going to need to relocate the S C T C, the Brad Williamson's group. Because they're in the Schoonover building and that we're probably going to be demoing. You know, we're not putting in Bales in there because we're having some real sewer issues and stuff. And so that might be a perfect location for him. I mean, we'll start to. We've been comping the rent for years, but we're going to start charging rent that'll be absorbed by all the towns that pay into that group. So do you have any issues with me moving forward on the use of that?
No.
Because I'm not sure what else we would honestly do, and I think that serves a good purpose for us and.
And I think that's a, I think that S C T V is a good is a good entity. I think they do good work. So, yeah.
I agree with you.
I'm in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool. All right. Report to mayor and council meetings. We didn't have anything, did we? I don't remember anything that I, oh, nothing for me. Open space, Jeffrey.
We had a meeting last night and and a site visit yesterday, and hopefully if I've forgotten anything, Seth can bail me out. But we had a site visit. Pardon me?
Like his name.
Like his name, a site visit at Dry Gulch and trying to figure out what, you know, what part of the infrastructure you would like to keep and what part, you know, should be removed. I think pretty much the consensus of opinion is that that the Quonset hut, which is very visible, needs to be decommissioned and maybe moved someplace else and use, you know, whatever. But getting gotten out of there and there's some other buildings in these varying opinions. Personally, I I think it's a kind of a cool destination. It's going to be, it's difficult to get to. You can't, we won't be able to drive to it. But for hiking and biking and skiing, it's it'd be kind of nice. So we're trying to determine what we're going to do with the facility. We're going to give first dibs to B H A to see if any of the stuff up there, you know, the mining relics and stuff they would like to to use. And then we'll see what happens as we get a little closer. Then we had a regular meeting and we talked a little bit about what was going to go happen at Cucumber Gulch. There's been thought about realigning the trail. And I, you know, I, it seems like there's varying opinions of what to do because the trail from Peak Seven is not not really sustainable. And the one of the proposals was to bring it right up to Peak Eight. But with the whole new could happen with the B G V thing, now that could be, you know, added impact to the gulch. Also, there is a retention bond that's been kind of scheduled, you know, if if need be for that that development. So I think we kind of, at the end, we kind of left it on a way to see for the year. Is that what you cut out of it? Okay. And and then we also talked about loops because the master plan, one of the suggestions was we we did, we do loops, and we pretty much agreed on some pretty cool loops, mostly for for families and hike, you know, hiking and and family friendly loops. We had like a a short family friendly loop, a little bit longer one. And I kind of just make it so people that visiting, you know, we will, we'll sign it, you know, so that they can, you know, this is a, they'll know how long it's going to be so they don't get over, you know, over their head. It won't be, you know, won't be any sort of Alfred Packer scenario. So, you know, and we have like two loops, two short hiking loops for the family and two a little bit longer one. And then a hiking loop, you know, just a regular hiking and running loop. And we are thinking about doing mountain bike loops, but one of the thoughts we, one is what we're And we are thinking about doing mountain bike loops, but one of the thoughts we, one is what we're going to do is, all we'd have to do is sign it. We have the loops, we'd have to kind of determine. But one of the thoughts was that with mountain bike projects already having pre-existing loops, you know, we're going to kind of see what we have done and any impact on the, on the loops that we, what we established. And, and then see if we need to do the mountain biking loop. Most of the loops are kind of focused around, a lot of it from Carol's input to me and then I kind of conveyed it to the, to the commission that where it's good parking, like the ice rink, the B and B, that type of deal that we, where we can have the infrastructure can accommodate if there is any added uses. And then, you know, we had a, we had a very vigorous discussion about what trail that we'll next call Chantilly.
Any, any motion on getting the, the Chantilly's changed?
They, they, they.
We just have to take a vote from here?
They all turned on me. I.
Just do it from here?
Yeah. And I, and I can't blame Seth. He was, he was, it was my, the only commissioners.
What if we just say the council wants?
Yeah. And I would like, I would like that just because I think we should assertive authority. Is that, did I cover everything? Yeah, okay. He didn't really say that was enthusiasm.
No. I think he's disappointed that you did such a great job.
Yeah, that was it. Yeah.
I think pickleball courts and the gulch would be next.
I'd like to have pickleball courts and a golf course.
So I'd like to rename this three Chantilly's, the Heart of the Sun and the Stars.
Yes.
Is what I would like to do.
Art the Moon?
I heard the Moon and the Star after the, the piles rock up there. And Jeffrey took it to the open space and they gave him the cold shoulder.
Yeah, they all did.
But I don't know how he presented it.
No, I, I think I did a good job, don't I?
Not well.
No, I, I thought, I thought it was a no-brainer, but they, they, you know, they, they turned on me. It was, it was a topic hotter than rehab. I could not get any, any support. So. So I'm, I think we need, I think we need fresh blood on Bosa. I think we.
Should we fire them all?
No, I think, no. Fire me. Get Kelly in there. Some of this tough.
I think we need to work on that, Jeffrey.
Okay.
Tourism?
We have meeting Thursday.
Wait, history?
Club dates, the Jesse Mill Construction will start later this week and next. To access the site, what they're done is they're using two shipping container bottoms to create a ramp from Goldrun Road to the Mayan tailings. And they went through county bridge and engineering and they're working with an environmental consultant. But that'll start soon. And just to put it in perspective, the scope of that project is about ten times the size of Sally Barber. They're working with Ty Courtrite, same contractor.
Kind of ramp?
Just temporary. They got over the river.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Milley Park is very close to the finish line. They're doing interior finishes. Electrical work. Yeah.
Site visit up there sometime?
I'm sure.
I asked Larissa already and she said that she.
Good idea.
And then finally they're expanding their youth programming and they have a lot of focus working with local preschools and summer camps. That's it.
Sweet. All right. Creative arts?
Nothing lately. I'll get back to you on the Eclipse Theater and possibilities for the kiosk there.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Have they moved any, is it arts that are going to hopefully do the tenth mountain? Trail renovation, tenth mountain statue renovation?
I haven't heard any new updates on that.
We kind of, check into that.
It's been a couple of years.
It has been a couple of years we've been talking about. Kind of hope that you could, you could make it happen, but. Maybe you should go on Bosa and you should go to BCA.
Yeah.
They would love you.
I'm all about that.
Events?
No, we have a meeting next week-ish. Usually next week, but because of the Fourth of July weekend, it was.
Like trash. Childcare.
Next week.
Because it was late.
And social equity.
Last Monday, so we welcomed a new commissioner. She was already contributing and doing great. We met with Jesse and Jess Hoover from H and three. They reviewed this supplemental climate equity plan that they're adding to our climate action plan. So just give some input, the commissioners gave them some input. It was at a very high level, no actionable steps yet. But commissioners provided great feedback. And then each of the five goals are divided into subcommittees and we're so close to finalizing that. And hopefully that will come to council. But even though they're not finalized, the commission's still working on various areas. In the Celebration of Diversity Goal, commissioners are working on Hispanic Heritage Month, which is mid-September to, for a month.
Sweet.
Is there any regular report that, that we could get kind of like an update after the meetings about what, what went down? Kind of like what you're doing now, but in a, in a, in a electric form?
You know what we've started doing is incorporating the minute. So it didn't make it under commission meetings, I think. So it'll probably be in next.
In our agendas. Cool. Perfect. Awesome. Anything from CML yet? Have you started?
We did. We had our retreat last week. They're going to fight the governor. So.
Sweet.
Hopefully collaboratively. Backpedaling.
Your CML stuff to the regular listener reports. I'm going to take out the events committee because we cover that in the work session under managers' report. And we'll add CML update. Report of Mayor and Council members.
Adict relinquished his number one position for Carol.
Oh, yeah. Wow. Yeah. Awesome.
Because of CML.
CML. Other matters? Who's got some? Other matters?
Oh, other matters. Next Tuesday, Kelly and I were partnering with RMU on their weekly women's bike ride, just for one week, usually around twenty women and tens. So go on a little bike ride and afterwards at RMU have a little chat. Kelly and I were going to talk about housing, sustainability efforts and just in general, getting involved and trying to establish more lines of communication.
Cool. Awesome.
Tuesday.
She is number, she is number. Women. It's a woman thing.
You can mansplaining to him. It'd be awesome. No, you, you girls don't understand. Any other matters? Right. With that, they're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.